Good evening. Good evening, can everybody hear us okay? We're going to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. First, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson? Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Yeah, I just got word that Ms. Stevenson won't be here. She had a family emergency tonight, so she's not with us. I wonder next if there's any additions to the agenda. Charlie?
I'd like a couple minutes after item number eight to pass out some materials that I've brought.
Okay. Do you want a title of the item to add after eight, or just a quick Charlie announcement? Charlie hand it out?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we'll add a Charlie announcement item to the agenda at the very end as item number eight and a half before we adjourn. Are there any other additions to the -- if there's no objection to Charlie making that announcement? None? Are there any other additions? Is there any staff report tonight? Seeing none? Okay, we will move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. I have a -- yes, Mayor? Corrections?
Okay, on stage three, the third paragraph here, it should read "The proposed increase does not include all the costs of the new campus to change."
Okay.
They have some of the costs, but not all of them. So it just needs to add the word "all" on the third line down in the third paragraph to include.
Include all the costs. Is that okay with the mover and seconder?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other corrections of tonight's minutes?
Thanks.
No other corrections? Would all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion is approved, the minutes are approved. Next is time for public input. We have lots of public input tonight, so I remind everybody to be succinct, to not repeat points if other people have made them and you feel the same way, to just mention that those have already been said. We will first take items of public input when people check the boxes that they wanted to speak beforehand, for people who might want to maybe speak and go back home. So I have some of those. There's other people who I'll call later this evening to speak at the time of the items. If you haven't yet filled out a yellow slip and you're here to speak, or just to register your support in favor or in opposition, the yellow forms are on the back table and you can pass them to our city clerk, Phyllis Clark here up at the left. We will start with Cope Cumston. And while Cope's coming up, if William Patterson is the next person up, if he can get on deck and get ready, Cope has comments about both the Bike Master Plan and the Public Arts Program this evening. You have five minutes, take it away, Cope.
I should get ten because I'm speaking about two, but--
Double duty.
I don't need it. Anyway, these are two programs that are among as any as important to me as anything that Urbana's doing. The Public Arts Program, I was a little bit concerned about comments in the News Gazette saying that this is a luxury that we can't afford. I think that $4 per person is an extremely modest fee for something that will benefit the entire community. I'm on the Urbana School Board, I'm not here representing the school board but myself, and I want to remind you all that the Urbana schools are known nationally for the quality of our arts program and have been honored quite often for that. And we have been fighting through all the budget cuts to keep money for the arts programs. What you would do here would be able to support those in ways -- there are so many things going on in Urbana now. The Music and Arts Center in Lincoln Square, the support for performing arts in classes at the Independent Media Center, the performances at the Urbana Free Library. I think that this program would just add momentum in a way that is going to do a lot of things we all want, including strengthening the downtown of Urbana and just infrastructure. In school research, it's been shown that student achievement and general success is directly impacted by arts in the schools and the quality of arts programs, so please keep that in mind when you're looking at this. And also, I wanted to say specifically about any redundancy that this might have with 44North Arts Organization. Yes, that is a very good community arts organization, but it does not operate at the grassroots level. It's a business and corporate sponsorship system. I mean, I'm a supporter, I'm a member, but I often tell 44North that I'm really upset that their programs are very high-level, expensive programs that people cannot afford. So 44North covers very different territory from what this would, and I encourage you to support it. About biking, I know that people who know much more about this than I do are going to speak later, so I'll just say, I've been a biker for 11 years, every day in this community, and it has been an uphill ride, all those 11 years until about the last year. And the Urbana work is -- there's light at the end of the tunnel, and it is thrilling to see the attention being paid to biking, bike safety. And I want everybody to realize how important it is that bike safety is not just for bicyclists, it's for pedestrians, it's for schoolchildren, it's for drivers. Awareness of biking is critical. Bike paths that are safe are critical, and we all know that there are a lot more reasons why we need to ride bikes now than there have been in the past. So I am fully in support of both of these initiatives, and I thank you very much for bringing them this far.
Thank you, Cope. Any questions? Thanks. Next, we'll hear from William Patterson, and on deck is Ben Grosser.
I can speak on the ground.
If you'd like to, feel free. If you state your name and address for the record.
My name's Lori Patterson, the wife of Will Patterson who is rushing over here but has not made it here yet. And I live at 306 Abbey in Urbana. I'm here to speak in favor of public arts. I have -- myself and my family have often been the very lucky recipients of opportunities for attending arts events, being engaged in arts programs, and it has made a huge difference in my children's life and in my life, my husband's life. I wanted to read something very quickly. Several months ago, my son became aware in school that there was a possibility that the Bush administration may cut funding for arts in school. And he wrote a letter to the President, and I'm just going to read the first sentence and the last sentence. The first sentence is, "Rhythm is an important part of how I learn in all of my classes. Without music, I wouldn't understand rhythm, and without rhythm, I wouldn't learn as much in school." And he concluded with, "I thought that the rule was 'no child left behind,' but how's that going to still remain as something we citizens follow if you take out one of the most important things to our culture from schools? Music must remain in school. Thank you, Jordan Patterson." So my -- I just want to strongly support this endeavor. The -- I think that there's been some mention in the media that this may be a focus on supporting having pretty things around us. And I would strongly disagree and emphasize that the very thing that builds people's spirits and gives us opportunity to celebrate our children and their achievements and operate as a community and as a family and identify the things that we -- that can carry us into adulthood with achievement are the opportunities for us to see what we're capable of doing, things that excite us in music and in art, and please do support this.
Thanks. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ben Grosser, and on deck will be Chris Hampson.
I'm a member of the Public Arts Task Force, I'm not here representing it, but I'm familiar with the proposal from that perspective. And I want to just talk about three different questions I want to try and answer. The first is, what makes this proposal relatively unique amongst proposals in the country? And there's a lot of things I could say to answer that, but I think one of the most important is how broadly it defines what arts are. We're not just talking about an outdoor sculpture in the public right-of-way, we're talking about art, music, visual art, music, dance, theater, spoken word, craft, et cetera. It's across the gamut, and it's not just what I think the arts are or what somebody else thinks the arts are, it's what everybody thinks the arts are. And I think what's important about this is that it's inclusive and it's diverse, and these are things that we want our programs to be. Second question is, why do we want a vibrant arts community in the city of Urbana? You're all probably familiar, or at least have heard of at this point, a book called "The Rise of the Creative Class" by Richard Florida. This is a book that often comes up in discussion of urban revitalization. Interestingly enough, Robert, Florida came out with a book today called "Who's Your City?" And the premise is that the creative economy of our current times has made the question of where to live just as important for people as who they want to partner with and what career they might want to choose for their life. And so when people have to think about where they're going to live, they have to compare what makes cities different from another. And we probably all know, so probably everybody in this room knows somebody who used to live in the city of Urbana, who doesn't anymore, and would state as one of those reasons something along the lines of its lack of proximity to an ocean, or the fact that it's 25 degrees outside in the middle of March. And I can sympathize with these things, but the fact is, the city of Urbana as government can't do anything about those. But it can cultivate a vibrant arts community, and that's the kind of thing that can tip the balance when people are trying to decide where they want to live and where they want to locate. And the important point on that is that it will make the city a better place to live, and that's what people are looking for. The third question and the final question I want to address is, why should the city of Urbana financially invest in the cultivation of such an arts scene? And there's a lot of answers to that question, and I think they all orient themselves around things that are already goals of the city and the city council in particular. For example, we know that youth who engage in artistic activities are less likely to engage in criminal activities, are less likely to get involved in vandalism or other mischief. Two things that the businesses in our city need to thrive are lots of people to patronize those businesses, so people living here, but also a talented, creative pool of employees to draw from. And both of these points are things that having a vibrant arts community, drawing these kinds of people in, pay back in dividends later, when you look at what is it that's going to make the difference from having these kinds of people here or not. Third, and this is kind of my final point on this question, is one of the council's goals is the revitalization of downtown, and you've done a number of things throughout the last three years to focus on that, and I know there are other things planned. And one of the several of the -- a couple of the programs in the proposal before you specifically will facilitate the -- a number of -- a large number of relatively modest art happenings throughout the city. These are things that will make this Urbana seem like a happening place, it will get people active and energized, they don't cost a lot of money, but they will make the downtown a place you want to be, as well as Philo Road, as well as neighborhoods, so that people can do things in their own environments. And all of these things are for the collective good of the city of Urbana. I hope that you'll support this, the task force who has -- I really appreciate their work, as well as the staff, has done a terrific job on this and put a lot of effort and a lot of public input to get this far, so I hope you support it.
Thanks. Are there any questions from committee members? Okay, thanks, Ben. Next, we have Chris Hampson, and on deck, Megan Wolf. Good evening.
Hello.
Go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name's Chris Hampson, I'm a local artist, and there are a lot of things that -- a lot of important things that the city of Urbana does for its community. Provides health and shelter, protection, basic economic needs. However, art is often overlooked. Some consider public art to be impractical or even unnecessary, and I do not believe the people of Urbana are this detached from the human condition. People need art to feel passionate about life, especially when most everything else is practical and necessary and routine. Art affects the way we think and live our lives, and I believe every city should support the arts. The city of Urbana is thriving with creative people, but their endeavors are muted by the lack of support within the community. It's important for our community as a whole to open up, engage in, and contribute to the arts. Public arts can inspire fresh ideas and help us recognize new possibilities. These are the reasons that I support the Urbana Public Arts Task Force.
Thanks. Any questions? Thank you, Chris. Okay, next up, we have Megan Wolf, and after that, Elizabeth Simpson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Stephen Benz is here joining us. He just rolled in from Arizona moments ago, so he's here at the very last minute.
Welcome.
I'm Megan Wolf, I'm the Director of Resource Development at 40North 88 West, and this is Stephen Benz, he's the Director of Operations at 40North. And I want to say that thank you for my somewhat recent appointment to the Public Arts Task Force. It's been a really great experience being a part of this process. And I'm here to talk about the collaborative nature of this plan, and that this is an important ingredient in the public arts plan, and it's been part of the process, it's been part of, you know, the public intake, and it's important to recognize that in moving forward and moving forward with this plan, that the collaborative spirit is there, and that the public arts plan is working in conjunction with 40North, and that we continue to work together cooperatively.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've gotten a couple of emails today, both from the director and from a board member, and they don't give that same message. So I'm hearing two different messages from 40North at the moment. Two via email and another one from you guys here today. So I'm not sure what the confusion is.
Well, I think there's just been a certain amount of confusion, and, well, that's kind of what I'm doing here today, is just sort of saying that there is collaborative language in this plan, and the directors are standing, sitting right here before you, so we didn't send any emails, but I just wanted to highlight that the Public Arts Task Force and in the formation of the commission, it's their intention to work with resources that already exist in this community, and to strengthen those resources and lift them up and work with them instead of duplicating efforts.
Okay, I guess, okay, tell me what Susan Herman's position is then? She's a board member or she--
She's on the board, yes.
She's a board member, okay. And Cody is a board member?
He's not.
He's not a board member?
Past president.
Past president, okay. Okay. So the directors know what's going on, you're involved, but your board doesn't necessarily -- isn't necessarily versed on the day-to-day activities here, is that, you know--
We've been in communication with the board, the board has seen the plan, we've had discussion about it at past board meetings, and in fact, Anna is on the board, and I think it was at the February board meeting where we brought this and had discussion about it, we opened it up for questions, and there was positive comment.
Okay, it'd probably be good to get an official endorsement probably from 40North.
Well, if I can just add, I think in supporting what Megan was saying, that if there is any confusion on that point, I think that what's being expressed is that same concern, that just an appreciation for and applause for Urbana's efforts to, you know, really not duplicate what's going on in the community already and work with the existing entities on achieving these objectives. So I think that's really the kind of thought that was being expressed perhaps in those emails.
Okay, any other--
Thank you.
Okay, I see two other hands, Danielle and then the mayor.
I've offered to speak to Cody, and I think that, I guess the question I have is, they were not present at February's meeting, correct, either of them? I'm assuming based on the emails that we received today. And that's part of the problem, is although if they've been presented to the board, the board hasn't necessarily -- they weren't all present at the meeting in which it was presented, and so there was a lot of misunderstanding and confusion about where we were in the process. I sent an email in response to that, that completely goes through the timeline since 2003 of working on the Public Arts Program in conjunction with 40North, with multiple meetings and interactions from that time forward. So I don't -- I don't exactly see why, if we have the two co-directors sitting before us saying that they're on board with this plan, why we would delay decision on the plan because we haven't necessarily got the blessing of the board. That needs to be explained to me.
Do you have a particular question for Megan or Stephen at this point?
No, I just wanted to know who was in attendance at the last board.
Okay, that's good. Mayor, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm very glad that you're here because I got those emails also, and it was an argument that there's only a certain sized pie, and if Urbana does anything, we're taking part of the pie away from 40North. And I think that's kind of the wrong approach to take. We're trying to encourage the arts, and I think the more the merrier, but I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Well, I think we're continuing to have those conversations, and, you know, Cody and I speak somewhat regularly, and so we talk about this, and so we're continuing to talk about how this can move the community forward, so. And overwhelmingly, I think, you know, he said positive things in that email, and he was applauding the task force and the council.
Charlie, one more question?
What isn't clear here is that, you know, I couldn't understand the disparity between what you're saying and what they've been saying--
Right.
-- and trying to follow it through the day.
I agree.
It just hasn't been clear, and that's what I'm saying, is that an official statement from the board would have been an appropriate thing to bring to the council, not just the director's statements, because the board hires you, right? They're your bosses, right? You know, so that's what I'm saying, is I think that would be a more appropriate endorsement, and I still think there's plenty of time to get that done.
Okay, so that's kind of a suggestion to pass on to them. Any other questions from committee members? Thank you both very much for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next, we will hear from Elizabeth Simpson, and then after that, Angie Broton. If you say your name--
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thanks so much for your dedicated energy to Urbana, and also for being able to keep your attention as we all speak from our hearts. My name's Elizabeth Simpson, I live on Fairview Avenue in Urbana. I work at Urbana Middle School, although of course I don't speak on behalf of it tonight, and I also am a consultant for nonprofits in terms of fundraising and effectiveness. So in terms of business plans and strategic planning for organizations, I speak from a background with that as well. In terms of financing, I just wanted to speak to the bargain that you get when you invest in artists. I feel like the phrase "the starving artist" doesn't refer to the artist that's starving, but that if anyone else were to live off of the money that an artist gets, they would starve, because artists are incredibly creative, and if you give me a shoestring and some duct tape, I will make you an amazing puppet show on restorative justice. So for every dollar you invest, artists are folks who will put in hours and hours and hours above and beyond of their time to make things work. What I really appreciate, having read this proposal, is what came up earlier is that this is something that's going to directly support the community. I moved to Urbana in 2001 because of its arts. I've lived in Massachusetts and was very happy where I was, but the folks I've met here and the passion that they had for this community and what they created is what drew me here and has kept me here this whole time, and what got brought up by, I think, Mr. Grosser of people leaving. The folks I know who've left have left in large part because they weren't able, not because they weren't creative, but because they didn't know where to go in Urbana. Where do you go to perform? Where do you go to put up your arts? They're not really sure. And one thing that this will do is to create a knowledge of, where do you go? You go to city council, and they're going to at least direct you. And I know there's a directory, and there's 40North, and it has its pluses, et cetera. But in terms of having a direct community participation, this initiative is amazing and is a super, one of those things where you would lose money to not do it in that sort of way. Also, just to speak to the function of art in terms of having your community, I do restorative justice work, a lot of it. In terms of, if you have a community that has arts present, it will deal with a lot of the criminal issues that are present, both in terms of what got brought up before, if kids and young people have stuff to do that's creative, they can vent their anger, they can address their issues through other ways than, you know, take your pick. Also, it applies to learning the multiple intelligences, and we heard from Ms. Cumston in terms of the school board. So in those ways, creating a vibrant and creative community, this is certainly the way to go. And also, just to speak to businesses, personally, I go to businesses and spaces that stimulate me, and that's why I want to bring my friends and my family when I come to this community. So especially the parts where there's partnerships with businesses and community spaces where there'd be murals or, you know, today we had this amazing little group of musicians outside, I mean, what a pleasure. As someone who performs in the farmer's market but doesn't know where else to perform, this is going to give artists the opportunity that they're already chomping at the bit, they would love to be more out there, and this would give them that opportunity. And finally, I just wanted to say with regard to the bike plan, as someone who's been hit by cars twice, and as a safe cyclist who wears my blinkers and my helmets, both times, they just weren't looking for me, because they don't look for cyclists, because it's not clear that in Urbana, even though, what is it, 30% of our population walks bikes or buses to school, even in this community, it's just not there. So again, I applaud the initiative, I was part of some of the planning meetings, and please do whatever you can to help create that safety and support, both ecologically. Urbana's amazing in terms of its ecological resources and the innovation we have, and then also safety. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Are there any questions? Okay, next, we'll hear from Angie Broton, and then Jacob Barton will be on deck. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Angie Broton. I reside at 906 South Maple Street in Urbana. I just wrote something out. I've experienced in the world of arts a place that embraces diversity and can transcend beyond the barriers of poverty, racism, sexism, classism, and many other isms that I have experienced in my world. I witnessed people from totally different socioeconomic backgrounds, cultures, and even countries set aside their differences and pick up saxophones. In a few months I have resided in Urbana, I have been privileged to interact and meet many hidden gems. The Public Arts Program would allow local artists the chance to contribute their gifts to this community as well as support themselves and their families by utilizing their talents. The composer that moves boxes from FedEx could perhaps start an after-school music program for at-risk kids provided with the grants. The artist that works as a maintenance man could do murals in our city buildings and hospitals, and a bus driver that goes to Chicago on weekends could stay here and play concerts. And I came to speak in support, as you can tell. Thanks.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions? Okay, next, we'll hear from Jacob Barton. Come right up, have a seat, and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jacob Barton. I live at, also at 906 South Maple Street in Urbana. I moved here in August, basically for the community of artists from Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I just want to read a quote from Nicholas Collins, who's on faculty at the School for the Art Institute of Chicago. He says, "My wife, who is a journalist and an art historian, had a wonderful interview with the Dutch Minister of Culture at the end of the 80s. They were changing the structure of their arts funding system, and Susan asked, 'Well, is there any condition under which you'd consider eliminating funding for the arts?' And the guy said, 'Oh, no, no. Here in Holland, we regard the arts as being part of the infrastructure of our society, like highways and sewers.' And I thought, 'What a practical idea. You know, you're not elevating it. You're saying it's part of the infrastructure. It's like a sewer.'"
Thank you very much. Any questions for Jacob? Okay, thanks. Next, we have Will Patterson, and after that, there's a number of people who want to be on record, but no more speakers for the before topic, so if you haven't filled out a yellow card, there will be other chances when we come to the agenda item later on tonight.
It's good service, that was cool.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll just start by saying, I think that, my name is Will Patterson, I'm the Associate Director of the African American Culture Center, also a longtime born and bred, City of Urbana resident, and truly understand the influence that arts can have on young people and actually what young people can produce and provide for cities. I co-direct a project along with Kimberly Chronic called the Youth Media Workshop that operates out of WILL, and we work with young people both in Urbana and Champaign school districts, and we use media as a tool to really take time to support young people in them investigating their own histories and telling those stories and contributing that data to the archives. We've produced four documentaries, three radio documentaries and one video documentary. And each one tells a different, unique story about community and the importance of young folks discovering their communities and discovering their past and really discovering themselves in the process. To say, to have city policy that would actually support funding, to support that type of work is absolutely necessary as we often are struggling to find different ways to expand our project. And we've been fortunate to do that with a variety of grant opportunities here locally but also on a national scale. And we're real excited about what could be forthcoming. One of the things that I would like to impress upon the city in particular, out of the African American Culture Center, is a program called the More Better Music Program that started with a civic engagement grant out of the Chancellor's Office at the University of Illinois where Nathaniel Banks and Robert Lewis were able to put together a program this past summer where young folks that didn't have an opportunity to have private lessons in terms of music actually get some tutoring lessons in the summertime. And I can say first and foremost, the young people I saw just roaming the streets were not a lot to do. That can be curtailed when there's actually sponsored programming and activities that come through city initiatives. In this particular project, there's the Jettie Rhodes Day that happens in King Park every year and Jettie Rhodes was a strong advocate for young people and actually having a teen center, some teen activities. And what I witnessed last year was young people after spending two weeks in this music camp actually playing Duke Ellington on instruments during Jettie Rhodes Day. And that was something that brought community together, all ages, shape, sizes, colors, it didn't matter. But the excitement that folks saw in terms of what those young people were able to produce in a very short period of time said to me that this project has to continue. We have to make sense that program exists this summer and that's something that Mr. Banks and I are looking at now in terms of how we're going to fund this particular initiative but ultimately, continue to grow this. So, with you all, having this on the table comes at a very important time. We're also going into our second phase with where we provided teachers from Urbana school districts with a summer institute last summer with Youth Media Workshop and teaching them actually how to use media as a teaching tool. And some of those teachers are now producing documentaries with students at Urbana High School. And we're now discovering another, going into our next wave of actually using media to spread the idea of using science and technology for young people to investigate their communities after some national activity that occur with public broadcast. So, I totally support this idea of the city actually getting behind and putting some hard funding behind arts funding. It's something that's absolutely necessary. It's something that is a great investment in terms of young people using that as a strong medium. And anything that we can do at the Culture Center to make certain that that happens, we support that. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Any questions? Okay. I have a group of people who wanted to be in, on the record, in support. I think eight different people. John Chandler of 2503 Burleson, Jan Chandler of 112 West Main, that's the Heartland Gallery, in support of the public arts program. Daniel Lewart of 310 North Pucy, in support of the public arts program. Barbara Headland of 505 Elliott, in support of the public arts program. She was a member of the Public Arts Task Force. Loriann Karsey, in support of the public arts program and the bike plan. Chris Evans, on record in support of the Public Arts Task Force and the Public Arts Program. Kyra Wilcock of 906 South Maple, on record in support of the Public Arts Program. Sharon Irish, who couldn't be here but she wanted to pass along her statement. I passed that out to other committee members here this evening. She had a photocopied statement for the record in support of the Public Arts Program. I just got a few more things here. A couple of people want to speak at the time of the item. So, we have one other agenda item, the Bike Master Plan, that we're going to shift gears to now. And then at that point, the few other people who wanted to speak at the time of the Public Arts Program item, we'll have a chance to speak on that. Danielle?
I also have a list to add to the folks who want to go on record in support and just for the record, Aida Para, Seth Fine, I'll give this to the clerk's office afterwards, Elaine Oldham, Cord Russell, Todd Rusk, Jungshim Hu, Sonia Castle, Mark Ensland, Julie Birdwell, Paul Koteimer, Daniel R. James, Tanya Henny, Kathleen Everingham, excuse me if I'm butchering your name, Mikhail Bruin, Patrick Mustaine, Marie Duffin, Catherine Fitzgerald, Susan Parenti, who served on the Arts Task Force, Rosalyn McPherson, Claudia Minor, Jotun Hill, who is a U of I music professor, Elizabeth Simpson, actually, she spoke this evening, Kirsty Simpson, Philip Johnston, and Nicholas and Mary Temperley.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Dorothy Martrano as well.
One more, okay.
And we did receive the two correspondences, both actually speak, one says, speak in support of the Public Arts Ordinance and further collaboration, Cody Solkowski and Susan Herman. Yes, those were the two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're shifting gears. The next item on tonight's agenda is a discussion of the Bike Master Plan. That'll just be a presentation we'll have. There's no vote or no action tonight from the committee. So, we'll hear a presentation and a chance for questions. And then after that, we'll come to the Public Arts Program and Commission. So, at that point, we'll hear from a few more people and hear a full presentation on the public arts. So, with that, the folks who are here this evening to present the Bike Master Plan, I think we have Rita from the County Regional Planning Commission, Ed Barsati, who was a subconsultant with the League of Illinois Bicyclists, Gabe Lewis, who's with the Regional Planning Commission, and a few other people. Actually, I realized before you both get started with your presentation, there's two other people who wanted to do public input at the time of the agenda item. I apologize if we pull up one more chair so that they can sneak up and say their quick public input. Okay, sorry. Thank you. We have two people who are here to give input at the time of this item. The first is Cynthia Hoyle, the second will be Rick Langloy. If you can both, both be brief, go right ahead. Sorry for the shuffle here.
Cynthia Hoyle, 2207 South Cottage Grove here in Urbana. And I provided you all with a handout. I took some information from the employee electronic survey that was done as part of my plan, the Mobility Implementation Plan. And I realized when I was talking in front of the Planning Commission and I mentioned some of this data, that this was information that's very pertinent to this discussion about the bike plan. So, I put together some of the information. And by the way, if you'd like to see and read more, you can do that at the website, which is www.ihavemyplan.com. But make sure you spell it M-I-P-L-A-N because otherwise, you won't get there. And I just wanted to very quickly run through a couple of points on here for you. This was not a random sample. It was an electronic survey that was sent out through major employers in the community, but I think it bears important information for us and we did have over 2,000 people respond to it. And one of the things I wanted to point out on the first graph is that it says that 15% of the people who responded said that they used their bicycle for commuting near errands more than once a week. So, Urbana already has quite a few people utilizing their bicycles to run errands. They're also, they found that because of the extensive ownership and use of bikes, that it appeared that this is an opportunity to expand the use of bikes, but we have some circumstances we need to address in order to do that, according to the consultant's analysis of the responses. They asked people what would cause them to use their bikes more often and 20% of the people responded that they would use their bikes more often if there were a network of bike paths and they would be very likely to use their bike more often. And 23% said they would be somewhat more likely to use their bike more often. So, 43% of the people said they'd be more likely to bike. They asked people about perceived barriers to using a bicycle and 56% strongly agreed with a statement that read, "It is dangerous to use a bicycle because of traffic on current bicycle routes." And 33% agreed somewhat with that statement. So, a very large majority of people felt like there was a safety issue. And so, clearly, the perspective of traffic danger has been a substantial deterrent. So, we know from the research that people feel safer when they have visible bike lanes and bike paths. And also, we know from the research that motorists are more accommodating of cyclists when those facilities are in place because then they know that they have a right to use the road. If you have cycled, know that there are people in the community who are very confused about the rights of cyclists. Some people think we should all be riding on the sidewalk and other people think that no one should be riding on the sidewalk and so cyclists get it from both sides. But one of the things that the consultants said in the analysis of our survey was that the expansion of the bike path network is one of the most promising ways to move people out of driving their cars by themselves. Included in here, there was a story. It is anecdotal, but I think it clarifies some of what we're dealing with here. There was a young woman in one of the focus groups who talked about the fact that if she could take her bike and ride it to the bus stop and catch the MTD bus and then get to her job in Subway since neither the bus nor her bike could get her there, that she would have been much, she would have been able to access her job much more easily. As it was, she took the bus and then had to walk a mile to her job because that was in an area of Subway which there is not currently bus service. So, people, the transit district's ability to serve people has also expanded substantially by providing these linkages in a seamless transportation system where people can shift from one mode to the other to get where they need to go without having to drive cars. And that way, you have both the people who can't drive and then the people who choose not to drive have alternatives for moving around the community and having mobility. So, that, I wanted to encourage you to certainly approve the bike plan. We're very excited about it. And as you know, I served on the Steering Committee as representative for the Transit District. And the Transit District is looking at all kinds of ways to enhance mobility, including accommodating cyclists.
Thanks, Cynthia. Any questions? Danielle?
Yes. A quick question. The part of the pie that is really interesting to me is on the first page, the blue section that says 30% of people don't have bicycles. And so, I wondered if, since this is like a snapshot of a large survey, did you gather additional data about what the barriers were to having a bicycle? Or do you have a sense of that demographic because it makes up such a large piece? And it seems to be a barrier that is fairly easy to overcome.
I would have to go back and look to see whether they did any further analysis on the group that said that they have no bike. Certainly, there's a percentage of that group who probably is not able to bike, but I don't know whether or not there was further breakdown of that category.
Okay. There's just one thing in talking to, can't focus on campus, is that because they aren't able to keep their bicycle in some secure place indoors, basically, they can't keep a year-round bicycle in Champaign-Urbana. And so, there's a need for having someplace where during the winter months, you can keep your bicycle. Otherwise, basically, it degrades outside. So, kind of trying to figure out what the set of things are that keep people from purchasing used bicycles, which, you know, are fairly readily available in the community, would be good because, you know, that could add to the overall matrix of what we're looking at. So, I'm just curious about that.
The Transit District is currently looking at, we have some bike lockers at Illinois Terminal, but we're looking at a system of bike lockers that work essentially like car share programs where you can call in or you can use the internet to access and reserve locker space and you can rent it for periods of time instead of for a month or a year or whatever. And there's a software program available for that now. And bike lockers make a big difference for people because they protect people's bicycles from the weather and they also do not then have to take everything off their bicycle that can be stolen and carry it into the building with them. And so, you can take your bike and lock it up without having to remove your baskets and your lights and your seat and everything else that might be stolen. And so, it's a system that the Transit District is looking at and I think that the university may want to look at in some other locations in the community as well.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Cynthia.
Thanks.
Next, we have Rick Langloy, who's right here. Go right in.
Hi, yeah, I'm Rick Langloy and I'm the Chairman of ChampaignCountyBikes.org. And I just wanted to come briefly and speak in support of the plan. I spoke with the Plan Commission also and I think obviously, they passed it forward to you folks. And we think it's a, the city staff and the consultants did an admirable job on producing the plan. They did their homework real well and took 30 years' worth of experience from other cities that have done bike plans and we're really getting that 30 years of experience in designing bike facilities in cities and putting into good work for us. So, it's a state-of-the-art plan pretty much and I think it'll add a lot of value to the city. When Ben Grosser was talking about the art plan, I couldn't help but thinking that everything he was saying about what art will do for the city, a bike plan will do for the city too. Somebody said at the Plan Commission meeting that they thought the bike plan would cost money. And I responded that I think it'll make the city money. I don't have data to support it, but I'm sure it adds to the quality of life and makes the city more attractive and more livable and more desirable to live in. And I wouldn't be surprised at all if it doesn't increase property values at some level in the city. And I don't really think it'll cost the city anything at all and quite the opposite is probably true. And of course, having a plan is one thing, but actually fulfilling it is another. And I think that there needs to be real support throughout city offices and divisions to make the plan happen once it's passed and keep it vibrant and alive and keep it moving forward at all times. I do want to thank again, the staff and consultants for engaging the bicycling community throughout the process. They did some great meetings with public input, which involved everyday citizens as well as bike advocates in the community. They listened to what we told them at every stage and that helps a lot. We look forward to continuing working with them. And the city knows, I think, that we are, the CCV and the League of Illinois Bicyclists is preparing a big education component. We're going to be a little bit ahead of implementation of your bike plan, but I don't think that'll hurt at all. It'll help. We hope to get more people on bikes immediately. That pie chart that Cynthia gave you indicates there are very few physically unable citizens. In other words, there are a lot of able-bodied people that aren't riding bikes that could be riding bikes given our geography and the flat nature of the area. So, we hope to increase that number. And we're going to be launching that education plan very soon. We have the second Bike Fest coming up May 4th and you're all invited to ride your bikes over to that in Husle Park on Sunday, May 4th and join us. And if anybody wants more information, ChampaignCountyBikes.org is the website that they have that. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Any questions for Rick? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now, we have Rita Black and Ed Barsati. I promise, I won't turn you away this time. I think we'll probably dim the lights for your presentation here and then after, we'll take questions from council members and discussion afterwards.
I'm Rita Black. I work for the Regional Planning Commission and we are here to go over what we have done to prepare the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan. This is the timeline of the whole process. The process started approximately in February, March of 2007. We signed the contract with the city and we started collecting all the documentation We signed the contract with the city, and we started collecting all the documentation necessary to start working on this plan. After that, we collected existing condition data, and we have a public workshop in May at the Urbana Middle School. Approximately 70 people attended the workshop. And with the information that we collected at the public workshop and all the information from all the other plans or documents that we review, we put together a set of goals and objectives and some guidelines for the development of the plan. And during the summer of 2007, we concentrated our efforts in doing an inventory of the data, of the network, collecting data in terms of roadway width and number of lanes and crashes and all kinds of information out there. With all that information and the information collected, we proposed some roadways to be part of the Bicycle Master Plan of the network. And with that, an implementation plan. With all that information, we held a second public workshop in December of 2007, at the beginning of December of 2007, to get more input from the public about the implementation plan and those projects that they consider were a priority to be implemented in short term or after five years or in the long term. And with all the information collected from the public, we did some tweaking to the network that we were proposing and to the other elements of the plan. And today, we have the proposed master plan, March of 2008. So far, we have presented the draft of the plan to the bicyclist pedestrian committee of the city and the Plan Commission. And today, we are here, and we're hoping to get back to the Plan Commission on the 20th of March and be back here on April 7th. With that, we can say that we had a strong public support for the plan. We had a lot of people participating at the different workshops, and we have received some comments that we are going to share with you today. The background from the plan, we started from the council common goal of get Urbana bicycling. And with the goal of get Urbana bicycling, there was an implementation strategy that was to work with staff and council to implement the bike committee recommendations on all new and improved routes and regional connections, including bike map, designated routes, signage, and all kinds of elements that we consider when we develop the bike plan. From there, we had collected some background information, but the three major plans that were the backbone of the Bicycle Master Plan were the Champaign County Greenways and Trails Plan that was prepared by the Regional Planning Commission in 2004, also the Urbanize Area Long Range Transportation Plan that was also prepared, approved in December of 2004, and the City of Urbana Comprehensive Plan that was approved in 2005. Those were the three major documents that were used to identify bicycle transportation improvement throughout the city. And on those elements, there are some ideas about bicycle facilities on the, on the area, beginning with the county and going back to the city, to promote biking as a mode of travel that need to be safe and efficient and a practical travel option for people and, including people within people, residents, and visitors in the city. With that information, then mainly, our focus was to look at the biking as an alternative for, as a mode for recreation, as an alternative transportation as, and also as a necessity. Then, when we look at the recreation part of biking, we know that it's a very popular activity today, and it's also a form of exercise. When we look at biking as an alternative transportation mode, we know that at the national level, 27% of all car trips are one mile or shorter. And going beyond that, we know that 40%, are less than two miles. And there, there is a lot of research on this that says that when you have trips that are less than two miles, those trips can be done bicycling if biking is a safe mode of transportation. And that's what we are looking at to do here in Urbana. And also, some people bike because it's a transportation necessity. With the price of gas that we have today, more people are biking. And to make it affordable for all these people, would be good to have a safe and convenient transportation network that include bike facilities. The study area that was included as part of the plan is the Urbana city limits. But we didn't stop there because our base plan was the Greenways and Trails. Then, what we did was to work with the Urbana network within the city limits. But we also used the connection, we connected any proposed improvement within the city to those surrounding towns based on what the Greenways and Trails Plan for Champaign County was proposing. Then, there is a connection between the Greenways and Trails Plan at the county level and what we are proposing for the City of Urbana at the city level. Then, even though the plan was just for the Urbana city limits, we connected all the network to the surrounding towns. As goals for the Urbana Bicycle Plan, based on the comments received from the general public and working with the steering committee members, we decided to set up three different major goals for the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan. The first goal as the goal for the, for, from the city council was to increase the bicycle mode share. That means get Urbana people bicycling. But the, the way that we set it up was increasing the mode share for bicycles by 50%. Based on data that we have today that was collected in 2001 for the development of the Long Range Transportation Plan, we have that, we know that more or less, there is about 80% of the people in Urbana bicycling today, or was, they were bicycling in 2001. The hope is by the end of 2013, that's five years from today, to have 12% of the people bicycling in Urbana. The second goal was to achieve, or is to achieve, a bicycle-friendly, friendly community award through the League of American Bicyclists. This is a really important goal for us because that includes developing the network and making the network safe and efficient, but not only that, it also includes the fact that when we have this award, it gives the impression that there is a high quality of life in the community, and that's really important. And that is achieved working also in education, encouragement, and enforcement. It's not just providing the bicycle facilities, it's just a whole program that we need to put together. And as the third goal is to expand the bicycle network. And that's based on the proposed network that we are showing here today. As objectives related to those goals, we have to create and maintain a bicycle network that is continuous, connected, and easily accessible for all users. And it will include on-road and off-road facilities. The bicycle network need to be safe and attractive for all users because we do nothing if we provide a bicycle network that is not attractive and at the same time, is not safe for the users. Provide bicycle facility that are, make bicycle a mode of transportation that is more convenient for people. And as I mentioned, also educate residents about alternative modes of transportation and bicycle facilities. And one important one, secure funding. Secure funding to implement the bicycle improvement that we are proposing here today. Then with that in mind, with the goals and the objectives, we started the whole process of looking at existing conditions. The first thing that we did was to inventory all the existing facilities, bike lane, shared use paths, side paths, Urbana Park District parks, and all the facilities that we have for bikers on the University of Illinois. Because the intention was to have a clear understanding that of what was out there, to make use, efficient use of what was out there, and to make the connections to, to make this plan really efficient. We also looked at existing documents from the City of Urbana, from the City of Champaign. We worked with the proposed plan, we were part of the steering committee that developed the transportation plan for the City of Champaign. Several documents from the Regional Planning Commission are key words. We looked at the car master plan, the campus area transportation study, the U of I multimodal transportation study, and all the plans for the different parks developed by the Urbana Park District. Because, as I said, the intention was to get everything together that was out there and start connecting the dots. With that, we create an existing conditions database that now is available for the city. On that database, we inventory about 250 different segments of the roadway network that you have in Urbana regarding number of lane, width of the lanes, width of the shoulders, parking, parking occupancy, crash data on the different segments, traffic counts, condition of the lighting, curbs, both routes, different elements. And it's a huge database that now is available for Urbana to be used at any time and that we advise that to be maintained, to be useful for them. And we did that using field survey, going out there, biking the roadways and measuring every roadway that we were considering to be included in the transportation network. With all that data and all those elements together, we started working on determining bicycle level of service. And at this point, Ed is going to explain all that.
Good evening. So again, we were looking at a network around the entire town. A network that allows people to travel from point A to point B, anywhere in town, not just on one or two particular paths in, in certain places. And when we were trying to figure out, with the aid of the public, what sort of routes we should be looking at, some of these characteristics came to mind. We wanted to have a continuous network. We wanted to have it be direct, serving transport, serving destinations. When we chose roadways, we looked for sufficient widths. We looked for roads where we wouldn't have to stop at every block. We looked for lower traffic. And where possible, we tried not to use brick streets. The network that we had in mind would have a spacing of generally half a mile to a mile apart. And with a lot of great input from the public, we were giving our marching orders of what routes we should study. So the next step was to go out there and study and make recommendations on, for each of the segments, what type of bikeway would be most appropriate. Bikeway is a generic term, and it could mean either an on-road facility of some type, and I'll go through a few of those in a second, or it could mean an off-road trail. Each has their advantages and disadvantages, and I'll point those out. But we, we, right away at the beginning, said that let's target a group of perhaps more casual adult cyclists. Not necessarily the hardcore spandex people, not necessarily kids, but let's target a broader range hitting a larger audience of cyclists. And that was the target audience of this plan. But at the same time, we were conscious of the needs of the other groups of cyclists. So what you'll see in this plan is a mixture of on-road bikeways and off-road trails. We'll start off looking at the menu of options with off-road bikeways. And what a lot of people think of when they think of bikeways is what's called a shared use path or a trail. This is typically an off-road facility, eight to 10 feet wide, concrete or asphalt. And often, it's used for recreation and transportation purposes. So that's the common bike path that you may see. The rail to trail that's currently being planned from Urbana to Danville would be considered as one of those shared, those, those shared use paths. There also is a specialized type called a side path. What a side path means is a trail that is alongside the roadway. It's parallel to the roadway. It's very much like a sidewalk. And what I've seen in a lot of towns is perhaps an overuse of side paths in places where they're not appropriate. Generally, side paths are fine in places where the road is 45 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour, with very few crossings of the roadway. So a plan may include a side path if intersections are done correctly, and if they're used only in places where they're appropriate. Moving on to on-road bikeways, there are many different options that we looked at for Urbana. One that's gained a lot of prominence in the last three decades around the country is called a bike lane. Those generally show up in pairs, one on each side of the road, and you have five feet or more of dedicated space for cyclists. It includes generally stripes, signage, and pavement markings. Examples are seen, for example, in Illinois Street, and I believe that Goodwin will soon have bike lanes as well. So that's one type. Another type is called simply a bike route. A bike route is rather general. At its minimum, it's simply putting up a green sign with some wayfinding that guides you throughout town. These generally are found on quieter roads if perhaps the bicycle level of service meets a certain threshold. In other words, we'll put up a sign if this is a road that's important to the network, but it still is a road comfortable for most cyclists that we're targeting. Another type is called a shared bike parking lane. And this I, I find is kind of interesting. It's a win-win in a couple of ways. The idea behind it is that you have a wide residential road, often where you have problems with people speeding on those roads through the residential neighborhoods. It might be a 25 mile an hour spot. You might see a lot of front yards with slow down, drive 25, save our kids, and so on. What you might want to do in such a situation is to have simply a stripe alongside of the road, seven or eight feet. That stripes, that striped area can serve cyclists. It can serve parked cars as long as there's very few parked cars. And that's often true in residential roads. And at the same time, it slows down traffic by narrowing the lane. This has been shown to be an effective way to slow high-end speeders in residential subdivisions. Finally, share the road signage is another treatment that we have. What we decided was, again, we're targeting the casual adult cyclist, but we recognize that there are roads that do not meet our threshold. They're not roads that the average cyclist will feel comfortable on, but they are, but this may be a road where there are a lot of advanced cyclists. And to alert motorists about that, we may put up share the road signs on some particular roads. Okay? And then finally, a new treatment called a share-o, which will be available in 2009, is a pavement marking. It has a couple of different purposes, one of which is to show cyclists where to bike in the lane of traffic so that they don't get hit by cars opening their doors, something called dooring. And if that's happened to you, you won't forget. All right. So that's kind of a general primer on the types of facilities we looked at in our menu of options. There are other infrastructure recommendations in the plan, such as bike parking, drainage grates, and bike-activated stoplights. There also are some non-infrastructure things which we'll mention. On bike parking, it's, it's key to include bike parking in any sort of network plan. If you're going to bike from point A to point B in town, and if you're going to go shopping or run some errand, you'd like to have somewhere to lock the bike and not strap it to a tree or a parking meter or so on. So what this plan recommends is a number of different racks, retrofitting in places where it's needed, with a lot of good input from the public on that. It also recommends that the, that we may take a look at the zoning ordinance, and when there's new development that comes online, that perhaps we include bike parking according to some specifications. And Naperville is a good example of somewhere where, where they have done exactly that. Bike parking, you want to have the style which supports not only the wheel, but also the frame as well, so that you don't have twisted bikes or you don't have bikes that are stolen with the front wheel left in place. Some examples of those. Drainage grates, it's important not to have these longitudinal grates which eat up wheels. If you don't have the cert, if you don't have the right type of grate, you can easily catch your wheel and flip over the drainage grate. So the recommendations will include places where perhaps the, the grates could be improved in Urbana, and also make sure that any future grates are bike safe. Finally, on the infrastructure, on the last item that we're looking at, bike Finally, on the infrastructure, the last item that we're looking at, bike-activated stoplights. If you've ever been on a bike before and you've been at an intersection, say Illinois Street and Lincoln, you may have had a hard time triggering the stoplight and being able to cross the street. In fact, in some states, the motorcycle advocates have created a law whereby if you can't activate the stoplight, you can go through it legally even though it's red. I don't think that's the way to do it. I think the way to do it is something that is available to us on the national scene, is to mark a spot on the pavement with a pavement marking where you show the sweet spot of the detector where you can trigger the light. And this can be used for a couple of different purposes, including positioning the cyclist at an intersection at the right place. So the plan includes a couple of places where this treatment is needed in particular. So it's not only infrastructure. If you build it, they will come, and that's been shown. But also, there's education, enforcement, and encouragement. On education, we're looking at both sides. We're looking at educating bicyclists as well as motorists. Bicyclists, there are a lot of materials that are out there. We're looking at doing a bike map, for example. There are safety materials that can be distributed throughout the city and schools and public places. And there are also programs, one called a bike ambassador program, where, for example, on quad day, you may have someone who helps to show how to bicycle correctly. You may have someone at the farmer's market and so on. Bike rodeos are a common thing that we've seen in schools. Curriculum time for kids to learn how to bike properly, and even adult bike safety classes. Because what we've seen is that, in America, we're not really getting education on how to bike, and so as a result, a lot of people are afraid to bike in traffic. They don't know what to do, and there's a lack of confidence to bike on road. By bringing education, it dramatically increases safety records in addition to people's confidence. So any plan that includes infrastructure should also include education. Education for motorists. The organization that I work for put together a video, a seven-minute video, for motorists on how to avoid the common crash types with cyclists, how to share the road with cyclists if it's a two-way street. Those have been sent to high schools, and this plan calls for use of that video in the high schools, perhaps on cable TV and other places in town, in addition to a share the road media campaign. Encouragement, there are several different ways you can encourage bicycling, from National Bike Month to Bike to Work Day, International Walker Bike to School Day, promotion of bicycling, especially if Urbana does achieve that national bike-friendly community status in a couple of years, working with the media, and even doing perhaps a commuter challenge of seeing how many cyclists can show up to a particular business. So a lot of these are being done, but these are things that the plan point out as programs which exist elsewhere that we could easily replicate here in Urbana. Finally, enforcement. We would like to provide police officers with the tools they need, not only to provide enforcement of motorists, but also cyclists as well. One example is a warning citation that can be used for either motorists or cyclists that shows what mistake that you've made. It's not giving the person a ticket, but it's educating them for the future. So there are plenty of resources like this. Working with the police department on a share the road seminar is another thing that is available. So all of these non-infrastructure things are keys to making Urbana a better place, a safer place for cyclists, in addition to all the infrastructure plans that we have. Okay, at this point, I'll hand it over to Gabe Lewis.
Good evening. I'm going to take you through our recommendations for developing an actual bicycle network in Urbana. This is the main map, which we have on display here on two large boards of the network. We have a variety of colors representing different facility types, green being the shared-use path or side path, blue being bike lanes, red being a bike route, yellow being the shared bike parking lanes, excuse me, and black being share the road. And we're going to look at a few streets where we're proposing recommendations. We went out and took pictures, and you'll be able to see what streets and places look like now and what they would look like with these facilities. So we start on the east end of Urbana, on Washington Street. This is by the Brook and Center, just east of Learman, and we have the four-lane cross-section with the median. We're proposing a road diet here, which would create bike lanes and also two lanes for cars.
Can you define a road diet for us?
A road diet is where you reduce the number of lanes in order to accommodate, well, there's a variety of benefits for that, whether that's accommodating bike lanes, reducing vehicle speed.
It's typically for roads that are somewhat overbuilt. You don't really need that number of lanes to accommodate the motorists on that road.
Lincoln Avenue is an example of where a road diet has been done by campus between Nevada and Pennsylvania. Our next stop is, this is facing east at Anderson Street, so we're between Philo and Vine, and the road is a little narrower here, but currently, we have the two lanes and it allows for on-street parking. And here, we have bike lanes on the stretch as it would be wide enough for that. The further west we go, here we're facing east at Broadway, so this is by the high school entrance, and we found a bicyclist biking here. And our recommendation would call for this becoming a bike route, which would include the destination signage, the wayfinding signage, to let them know what attractions are ahead on this route.
Is that you?
That is not me.
Not me.
No, no.
Oh, I'm itching at this.
Yeah.
No spandex allowed while bike planning.
And finally, we're looking here west of Broadway towards Race. We found a bicyclist heading in that direction again. We're proposing bike route, and they can see that campus is points seven miles ahead. The next street we're going to look at is Main Street, which is also highly requested, and there's ample opportunity to make this more bicycle-friendly. Here, we again start on the east side of town. We've got four lanes and a semi-raised median by the Humane Society entrance, and with a road diet again. Now, we have three lanes, keep the center turn lane for turning movements, and it accommodates for bike lanes. We're further west now. This is facing east towards Cottage Grove. To the right would be Victory Park, and we found a bicyclist here in one of the very wide lanes. And with striping changes, we see that bike lanes can be implemented and so retain parking. This is getting closer to downtown. This is west of Grove Street, approaching Vine. The stoplight there is Vine Street. We have five lanes here, four lanes in the center turn lane, and we found a bicyclist here. And this again would be a good location for a road diet, which would still have three vehicle lanes and the bike lanes. And finally, we're facing east at Race Street in the heart of downtown. Got four lanes of traffic here, and a road diet would still create three lanes and bike lanes and retain parallel parking. It should be noted that this block between Race and Broadway, implementing bike lanes is dependent on a parking study that is currently being undertaken, that the city is involved in. And we don't expect that the parking study will be complete before the bike plant, so it will remain a study area, this block, unless that parking study is completed. Now, we're going to look at two north-south streets. One is Broadway, the Broadway Avenue corridor, I should say, since it does begin and end. Starting on the north side of town, near Crystal Lake Park, we see a teenage bicyclist on the sidewalk here. If we were further north, the road would be brick, so there's not much opportunity to provide even a bike route, you know, on-road facilities. But here we see that a side path would accommodate this bicyclist as well as any other modes or bidirectional traffic for the bicyclist. This is also in the Crystal Lake Park master plan for the Urbana Park District in an effort to create a loop path around Crystal Lake Park and Bucy Woods, a loop side path. Now, we're moving further south. Broadway does in at Elm, and the plan calls for a bike route around Lincoln Square Village, the east side. And here, this would be Walnut Street by Health Alliance, and we found a bicyclist biking there. And just simple signage would help increase motorist awareness that this is a bike route that people will be using to get around. This is the south side of Lincoln Square Village. You can see the bike parking on the right, again, by Health Alliance. And this is High Street facing west, towards the main south entrance of Lincoln Square that we're recommending as a bike route. And now, we're back on Broadway. This is at Illinois Street, facing south. We found a mother and child bicycling on the road. This isn't a heavy-traffic road, but there is room to implement bike lanes, so this is what it would look like with that. And finally, the recommendation between Illinois and Washington, between Lincoln Square Village and Urbana High School, is to have bike lanes and still have parking on the east side of the street. This is one more look, facing north towards Lincoln Square. Since Broadway is pretty white, we have the bike lanes here and the parking. And finally, we're going to look at Kent Street. Half-mile long, it has many street widths. It varies a lot, and some striping changes would help clarify a lot of things here, not only helping bicyclists, but just defining the roadway a bit more, making it more useful for all modes. This is facing north of Rainbow View towards Washington. Not really any striping right now, very wide, no cars parked, you can see. And we're recommending bike lanes here, still retaining parking for the residents that live on this street. This is facing the other direction, facing south of Rainbow View. Again, don't have any striping right now. Bike lanes would help encourage bicycling here. This is a little further south. The intersection is Michigan Avenue, which is about halfway between Washington and Florida, and the road is pretty wide, and then it narrows. So you'll be able to tell here that in the foreground, the parking is retained on the left side there, and we have bike lanes, and then the bike lanes continue, and there's no shifting here. That block would actually not have the parking, but the bike lanes would continue, defines the road a little bit more. This is north of Vermont Street, which is the first street north of Florida. We're looking north here with the existing striping, and here would be bike lanes and parking on the right side there. And finally, again, we have this shift in the width of the road. We're looking south towards Florida, and this is what it would look like with bike lanes and the parking here in the foreground. So along with all the recommendations that are listed in the plan for each street and each street segment, there is an implementation matrix, which is sorted by the agency that is responsible, by the timeframe that we're proposing that it be implemented during, as It's sorted in a variety of ways. It includes all the same information, which includes the project location, the treatment type, if it's bike lanes or bike route, the agency responsible, there are a variety of agencies involved in the formulation of the plan that were included in steering committee meetings, cost estimates for striping, signage and/or construction, the proposed timeframe of the facility installation, the future status of on-street parking, and other relevant comments, such as it being a temporary facility until a permanent facility is constructed, or that it's a side path part of a loop path, such as in a park, such as Crystal Lake. This is a portion of the implementation matrix for the first five years with all of that information, and this map shows the improvements proposed for the first five years of the plan. A lot of it is based in the core of Urbana, and a lot of it is signage and striping, which are fairly inexpensive, so we can really see a lot of improvements in a short period of time. The second five years, the six-to-10-year timeframe, includes projects that are planned during that timeframe, things, road reconstruction that may happen, but is more longer-term. Also, a lot of these projects are side paths and shared-use paths that are outlined in park district plans, university plans, that sort of thing, and again, bike lane installation with road reconstruction projects, as you can see on Washington and Bradley. And finally, we have the 10-plus-year timeframe, which is the long-range projects, certain projects that funding may not be secured for right now, but is included in the plan to provide for that connectivity and to create a full bicycle network around Urbana, as well as the fringe of Urbana and connecting to the other communities, as pointed out in the Greenways and Trails Plan. And a big question of the plan is how will we get the funding to pay for all the projects? There are a few methods and sources. They are listed in the plan, and I'll discuss a few of them here. One is that a dedicated budget from the city of Urbana should be implemented for a bikeway implementation program, and that goes hand-in-hand with the capital improvement plan. Additional funding can also come from agencies such as the Park District, the County Forest Preserve District, the Champaign County Highway Department, IDOT, and other agencies that are relevant when accommodating bikes. Another method is that it can be paid for by developers with the construction of new businesses and residences. One example is the construction of Meyer helped pay for the side path on the north side of the road on Windsor Road. And facilities can also be installed as part of road projects by the city, county, or state, and also through federal and state grants. And finally, this may be the most important element of the plan, is that we're recommending that a city staff person is dedicated some of their time to being the bicycle coordinator. That may be dedicating part of their time now, and we would ideally like to see that be a person, a staff person, dedicating their full time to bicycle issues. That would also include being involved with the BPAC and collaborating with other city staff and relevant agencies when it comes to reviewing development plans, road project designs, and overseeing everything so that it fits the goals of the plan. So we come back to the timeline, which right now, we're involved, we're in the 30-day public comment period. We do have one more week for that, that citizens can provide their comments. It is available in a number of ways, online, at the library here at the Regional Planning Commission offices for people to review, and they can provide comments if they so choose. That will end next Monday. And then our next meeting will be on March 20th to seek approval from the Plan Commission, and then we will be back on April 7th to seek approval from this council. And the final step then, after all approvals, would be to prepare and print the final plan, the final document. And we have received some comments thus far that we would like to share with you. One involves road diets and pavement markings. Just going to read here. Marked bike lanes appear much safer than just indicated bike routes and send a clear message of support to alternate transportation. It also strikes me that older bike riders, such as myself, feel significantly more secure. For example, I drive Pennsylvania between Race and Lincoln almost every day, but will not ride a bike on it because of the traffic, using one of the less-traveled side streets. With a designated bike lane, I would. As the elderly but active population plan, Fort Sure Down, comes on board, I believe this is relevant for southeast access to campus. This is something that we are investigating more, that staff is looking into. Bike lanes would require the removal of on-street parking, so this isn't something we're just automatically going to recommend. We're still in the process of looking at it, but do like the idea. More comments include adding text or recommending an ordinance that requires developers of future subdivisions to link to the bike network for those paths and streets that are currently not shown on the proposed... not shown on the proposed network map. And one way that we hope to address that is, as noted in the handout that you received tonight, one, an additional recommendation will be that the plan should be evaluated annually, in terms of bicycle-level service can be analyzed again with road reconstruction projects, or just repaving, and that the plan be updated every five years. So we hope that will be something that can be done in order to achieve this goal. And another comment were that some of the Plan Commissioners refer to this as an expensive plan, perhaps even needing to raise taxes, and Jennifer will discuss this.
I wanted to address this. I actually took the implementation matrix by timeframe and took the dollar amounts. And while the bottom line looks big, I mean, 5.4 million to implement the entire plan, if you break it down, from zero to five years is about 1.2 million. But when you look at the projects, they're actually projects that have already been planned. They're in the CIP. There are 22 bike lane corridors that are planned for zero to five years. And of those, only 12 of them are actually new projects. Like the, the bike lanes on, say, Main Street, those were already planned. They're already shown on, there's a figure, Figure C and Figure G in this 2007 CIP. And I just did this this afternoon, but I can provide it to everybody, so they can have it for their information. But you can see that, you know, there are projected on-street bike lanes, or a projected path. And there's some of the new projects, like Goodwin Avenue, we got a $900,000 grant for that, and the university is splitting that 50/50 with us. And the Oregon Street and Gregory Street, those would be 50/50 splits with the university. The Main Street downtown, IDOT, actually, we just got an email today, they announced the enhancement grant opening. So we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss what projects we can apply for under that grant. The new things that would not have been identified in the CIP would be like the signage for the bike routes and the share the roads, but, I mean, that's $35,000 over five years. So that's just not a, not a significant amount. And the bike lanes are actually just 200,000. Probably the biggest thing would be the shared-use paths in that zero-to-five years is 781,000. But, I mean, you have Florida in there, from High Cross to Abercorn, that's designed, it's going to be constructed as part of the Menards Project. So that, you know, that money's already there. And Windsor Road from High Cross to Stone Creek, that, you know, that money is, is already secured. And then, the six-to-10 years is 472,000. And then the 10-plus is a big one, it's 3.7. But it has a lot of side paths, but all of those side paths are already identified in the CIP. There, there are roads like Airport Road, Curtis, Olympian Drive, Lincoln. So these are all projects that, like I said, have already been identified in the CIP, not the funding. But there, there's not really not a lot of new projects that we're looking at.
Okay. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll open it up to questions?
That was into mine.
Sorry. That was into her. There were more comments here, not too many.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. No problem.
We did want to address another issue here, or at least point that out to you, that we've been in discussion with the Urbana School District. Our initial recommendation was to use the Broadway Avenue corridor to go through the Urbana High School and Middle School campus, which would also go by the indoor aquatics center. However, they do have concerns about putting a route through there and using the existing sidewalks and widened sidewalks. They do not want to do that. We still are trying to be in discussion with them to see what can be done. The other two options, to the east, using Vine Street, we have concerns, there is a wider sidewalk, but there are a lot of multi, there are a lot of modal conflicts with kids getting in and out of school every day. There's, this is the main loading zone for getting on buses and everything, and this, we don't feel this is a safe place to recommend as a bike facility. And on the west side, Race Street, while we'd love to have bike lanes, it's not, does not have the width right now. It's very hard to say that we're going to be able to fit in a side path or bike lanes in the future. So neither of those will be recommended as a route around the school. So this is something we still want to look at a little bit more. And we also have the issue of complete streets, which Ed is going to talk about a little bit more here.
I don't know if anyone, well, a couple of us here have heard the term "complete streets." What it generally means is that when you design a roadway, when you do reconstruction, that you make sure that all the users are accommodated, whether it be bicycle, motorist, pedestrian, transit users, and so on. And I'm sure many of us here think that complete streets is a, is definitely a good goal to shoot for. This being a bike plan, I think bicycling is simply one component of, of complete streets. Complete streets doesn't mean that every road has a bike lane. What it means is that you have an appropriate level of accommodation for the context that you're dealing with. I think that's, that's probably good on complete streets, unless there's other questions.
Okay. Now move to our final comment, which addresses Main Street. And I'm not going to read the whole comment here, but it's very in favor of having the bike lanes continue through downtown, stressing the importance of that continuity, and noting that bicyclists do patronize shops and restaurants and cafes, and that, that's not something, bicycles are not a population that should be overlooked in favor of providing more parking. That was just a comment that we had received. And finally, I'll point out the website that we have. It's housed under the Regional Planning Commission website. The draft document is available for review here. There, this is where we also list updates. We have maps, other resources for bicyclists, and presentations, including tonight's, that will be on the website tomorrow. And that's all we have. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gabe. Thanks, everyone. So that website address is where people can go. I know there's a phone number and an email, and this is the last week for public comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So for committee members this evening, there's no action for this item, but I want to, so there's not any vote or anything we have to do at this point. I want you all to have a chance to ask questions. Ed is in town, and I don't know that he'll be in town again. He was one of the subconsultants. We also have Jennifer Selby, who is in the Engineering Division with Gail and Bill Gray in Public Works. And she's been the lead staff person from Urbana to help create the plan. So she's here to answer questions. And I just want to have a chance for everybody to get questions out there with this item tonight. I saw the mayor's hand, and then we'll take others.
Yeah, I was interested in Jennifer's budget numbers. Did you add up the new things that were not already in the capital improvement plan? I think you might have them grouped by five-year increments.
No, would it be easy? This is a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. So that's, I mean, that's what we really need to know, is how much extra beyond what we've already budgeted or planned for.
Okay. What I'll do maybe is just go down the line. I saw Charlie's hand, and then Robert. Charlie, go ahead first.
Yeah. A couple of quick ones here, and they are all over the place here. Rita mentioned increasing the 8% mode of bicycling to 12%. How do you measure that mode? Is that based on total number of trips, by all means, or how, how did you, how does that number?
There's an extra chair over to the right, too, if you all want to, if you all want to stay up, that's fine. There's another chair. Yeah.
So far today, we don't have exact data. The data that we have is from the travel survey that we did back in 2001, where we asked families to provide a list of all the trips that they did during one day, for all the people older than 10 years old, any kind of trips. And we have quantified that, but we haven't, and those are total trips. But today, we don't have actual data about number of bicyclists in the community, because we don't have bicycle counts. We have bicycle counts just for intersection, but not specific location counts. And that's something that we need to start looking at it, to see how we can count the number of bicyclists in different locations. Then we'll have to do, again, a travel survey to be able to compare, unless we do traffic counts, including bicyclists.
Two other questions. Ed piqued my interest, piqued my thinking when he mentioned that sharrows were going to be available in 2009. Is that now officially approved for 2009 and on?
Yeah. The committee that, at the national level, has approved this as a, as an accepted treatment, has recommended, and they're currently in a public input process themselves. But it is fully expected that by the next publication of what's called the IMUTCD, that this will be included in 2009.
Do we have any, yeah, do we have any plans to want to use that in 2008?
I think we're going to fill out an application to do the experimentation with the City of Champaign. It'll be a joint application.
Okay, great. And does somebody, you know, you mentioned ordinance changes in Naperville. I assume that, Libby, yeah, Libby's shaking her head, so she knows what those are. And I had one more. Gabe mentioned, in looking at the map, the one thing I see that is sort of missing to me is any marking of Orchard Downs from, of Orchard, from Orchard Downs to Pennsylvania. You left that one off.
You didn't include it now.
Oh, you now, you are now including it? Okay.
Yeah.
And of course, there's the whole debate about what to do between Orchard Downs and Lincoln along the, which we didn't talk about earlier, but we should probably, I know, you don't want to touch that one. But, but the university is interested in working to develop that.
Yeah. We talked to Dr. Coleman, he's the one in charge of the Orchard Downs development. And he doesn't know yet what is going to happen there, but they are looking at promoting bike.
Well, the other side is the Arboretum, and that's, that would be Bill Credenier.
Yeah. Yeah. And we are working, RPC is working with the university, the San Mary's Road corridor study, and that extend up to Haysonburg. And we'll be working with them on that.
Okay. So that's all of my questions. Thank you. I want to thank everybody that's been involved, and Cynthia and Rick for coming here as well, in the public comments in support of this. So it's been a lot of work by B-PAC and others, and I know Jennifer's been putting in a lot of time, so, thank you, everybody.
Danielle, did I see your hand? No. Okay, wrong. Just waving. Bike maps are good for cooling off.
With full disclosure, it should be known that I am a member of CCB, LIB, LAB, and Adventure Cycling. And I'm one of those 8%. And, and I'm involved in the map, map project with CCB and LIB. They put together a great, this is a City of Aurora map, which has, you know, basically these bicycling-level service designations on the map. And the flip side is an entire education piece. And we're hoping to see something like this in months for Champaign, Urbana, and the university.
Thank you.
I've got a couple copies if people want to look at it.
Okay. Robert Lewis? Do you have any questions?
One brief one. I really appreciate all the work that's been put into the plan, and how comprehensive it really is. Were there any areas that you, I'm just curious, that were real bottlenecks in terms of the trail-sways plans and all these things, trying to put all this package together, that we need to think about in the future over that 10-year period, that, that really could be a potential issue?
Well, basically, the area north side, northeast Urbana, because the landscape that we have there, there are not a lot of facilities for bikers there. But that's, the intention of the plan is that, based on the input that we received for the Illinois One Thirty study, that the residents of that area want to keep that area as natural as possible. Then we didn't promote bike facilities on that area. It's the, it's the only one, but it's just a decision that was made a long time ago.
I understand. But overall, it looks like the view is just a lot, you know, after we look at everything, it's not as extensive as one would think in terms of dollars. It's a matter of looking at the resources we have already planned, and spending some money for paint and stripes and signs. Is that an accurate assessment?
Oh, yeah. I could say so.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Going down the line. Dennis?
Well, your accomplishment so far has been pretty impressive. And I, I do have a strong feeling that if, if the biking pathways or signage was clearly placed within the city streets, it would really promote safety, and it would be a great benefit for a lot of the people who are commuting. We do have some, some areas where there are kind of bottlenecks, and you did mention Main Street. And I know that, you know, the downtown parking plan is still in progress, and it hasn't resolved. It hasn't, you know, we haven't had any kind of final presentation of solutions. We're still collecting data on that. And how to use bike paths, or how to get bikes, bikers into the downtown area is a very significant problem or a challenge, because we do want to bring them into the downtown area. And I know that the Planning Commission, Parking Traffic Study Commission, looked at Elm Street as an alternative avenue that would be less, I mean, we talked about it a little bit, it's less densely traveled. But I know that the Bike Planning Commission, yourselves, preferred having them come right into Main Street. So there's, there's a few parking questions that are taking place there that I haven't been ironed out yet. You have hopes to bring the bicyclists right into the Main Street downtown area, right?
Yes.
Can I ask you about one or two other ones? You didn't really talk specifically about too many of the streets that are north of university. And I'm wondering about specifically Cunningham Avenue. That is a, you know, major corridor into town. It's a heavily-traveled street. Have you looked at that extensively?
Yeah. We look at Cunningham Avenue. We decided not to propose any bike facility on Cunningham Avenue, because different reasons. One, there is no access control on Cunningham Avenue, access management. You have so many accesses along the roadway that.
You mean, like curb cuts?
Yeah. Curb cuts along the, along the, along the segment that promoting biking there is kind of not safe. If you go with the side path, with the kind of facility that we call side path, and if you promote bikers to go on the roadway, then the volumes are high and the speeds are high. Then we decided not to go with Cunningham Avenue, and that's why we decided to take a look at Broadway Avenue. And knowing that we have the Crystal Lake Park, and Urbana Park District include as part of the Crystal Lake Park, the loop around the park with side path, we think that's a good possibility of combining, having the park as a generator of traffic. That's one of the guidelines for the development of the plan. And partnering with the Urbana Park District to build the side path and get all the connection, connection all the way through Urbana up to the Blair Park in Florida Avenue. Then we think that's a better connection than using Cunningham Avenue.
Even, even though you have the options of doing what you could have just mentioned as a road diet, that might be actually prove as a, if you had, if we had a three-lane highway, if we had three lanes on Cunningham, and there was like, you know, adequate turning and two bike lanes, it would still not be an appropriate use?
The, the problem is that when you decide to do road diet, you have to look at the overall volume on that roadway. If the overall volume is over 15,000, around 18,000, it's not recommended to do a road diet, because you'll have congestion.
So it's really just too busy of a street?
It's too busy.
Okay.
It's too busy.
What does it take for our city of Urbana to become designated as a bicycle-friendly community?
There are just two in Illinois, and there's probably around 40 or so around the country. What it would require, and I'm convinced it would take at least two or three years at this point, you'd have to, you'd have to have a decent off-road network. In other words, you'd have to have recreational trails. You'd also have to have bike lanes. You'd have to show significant progress in the areas of enforcement, encouragement, and education. So you'd have to have both, the infrastructure and the bike parking, all the things we talked about. You'd have to have at least something, some progress.
So after five years, if we adopt a lot of these programs, we may well be in a position to have that designation.
Yes. And there are different levels, starting from bronze all the way up to platinum. There's only one platinum in the whole country right now.
And that's Davis, California, where you would expect.
Urbana already has 8%. I think of all towns in Illinois, there's so much potential. so much potential here.
I've got one more question, I guess. We, I mean, I'm not really a bicyclist myself. I mean, I used to be in other communities, but for whatever reason, I don't seem to do that here. I used to take the bus a lot. I do observe a lot of bicyclists when they're traveling through traffic, or, well, not through traffic, but through the city. They don't really, they have their own laws about using stop signs, things like that. If we're promoting bike lanes and you have the installation of a triggered stoplight, is there an expectation that the educational program will be modifying the typical road patterns of most bicyclical users? Usually, if you, usually what I see is, they, they look both ways, they, they kind of glide, but they just keep pedaling.
It's definitely a two-pronged approach you have to take. One is you have to educate them on what is right, but then, of course, there are people who blow that off. And I, I think that's where enforcement comes into play. You know, I'm a bicycle advocate. That's what I do with my day. And, and when bicyclists don't follow the laws, it makes it harder on everybody else. So by working with the police, some progress can be made. Some police, and we've talked to them, are reluctant to give tickets, because the justice system basically says, don't waste our time. But there are other ways, including these warning citations, to say, you know, if you're going to get stopped by a policeman, that'll shake most people up, you know. I'm going to have to pay a little more attention to the laws. And so I think working with police, in addition to teaching people what is the right thing to do and why, are two tools that can be used to help.
One more, I guess one final question, if you'll be patient. I know that we've installed pedestrian audible signs, signals for safety crossing for people who have impaired sight or hearing or whatever. And that's one of the costs of the infrastructure of upgrading busy intersections. So what would, what's the typical cost for a triggered stoplight activation device, if you're aiming to include that in a bike lane activation? Is that something that's already in existence for cars, and we're just trying to like, get the bicyclists to land in the right place to trigger an existing implement? Or is this something, is it a new, a new device that needs to be added in some locations?
Yeah, the existing, the existing technology right now is you have a rectangular detector that the cars trigger, and...
By weight or by, by...
By magnet.
By magnet.
It's a magnetic field.
Okay.
And so a bicycle, if you position it in the right spot, has a lot better chance, especially if the amplifiers are tuned correctly, to trigger the signal. In California, they're starting to look at, so in other words, that wouldn't cost anything more than just marking the pavement and putting up a sign that says, put your bike here.
It's not an additional infrastructure cost?
It's not an additional thing. However, the new technology includes camera detection, which is used not only to detect bicycles and motorcyclists and pedestrians, but that seems to be the wave of the future, and some places, especially in California, are using that. So you have the, the cost of camera detection. How much of that you can attribute to just bicycle purposes, I don't know.
Okay.
That's something that's in the future.
Well, thanks very much. Okay, Lynn, I saw you had your hand up.
I said, is Wheaton, Illinois, one of the ones that's friendly?
No. No, in fact, they're just starting their bike planning process now.
Because I thought they were like a gem. I mean, they've got some good paths and...
They have one good path.
Okay. I guess that's the only one I've been on.
Ed, it's Chicago and where else? Chicago and...
Schaumburg.
Schaumburg, okay.
Schaumburg's mayor, for twenty-five years, has been the equivalent of mayor daily in Chicago, bicycle-friendly mayor.
I think Bloomington, Indiana, and Ann Arbor and Mass. And I think there are a lot of other Big Ten examples that are kind of our peers.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor, go right ahead.
You were talking about Urbana has eight percent. Is that one of the criteria for the bicycle-friendly city?
I, I'm sure that would, that would do very well.
I mean, is it one of their, their steps that you go, you have to measure up to? And what is their standard?
You know, I don't think if, I don't know if they have in their standards reaching a certain percent. I think it's more the efforts that you make as a town.
Okay.
The fact that you're starting off with eight percent, though, is fantastic and would be nothing but a plus in that application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from committee members? Charlie, last opportunity.
So we'll see, we'll see a revised version of the plan when it goes to Plan Commission?
Yes, and no.
No.
Because the, the last day for public comment is Monday, and the Plan Commission meeting is on Thursday. I don't think we'll have the time to do all the changes between Monday and Thursday.
But they'll be identified.
But we'll be identifying all the changes. We already gave you, yeah, some of the changes. Any additional changes, we'll show that to them. But the final document will come here on April seventh.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, yep, last one from Dennis.
And this is actually, I almost forgot this one, but I think it's a significant one. It seems like if we adopt the plan generally, it's basically carried out by the Public Works Department, and yet the recommendation is that there be a full-time staff person assigned to what modify, not modify, but manage the bicycle plan. Can you explain why it would take a full-time staff person to do that?
The idea is to start with a staff person just overseeing the whole process. It doesn't mean that has to be full-time, but once you have the whole network in place, you have to have a full-time person just looking at every project, project coming up to the city for new developments or businesses, and taking care of maintaining the facilities and all that. And at the beginning, you will not need a full-time person working on it. But after, I would say, five years, probably you will need a full-time person.
These wouldn't be the tasks that would normally then be adopted as part of our general planning by the, our planning department anyways?
Well, I don't know the details about that.
I'm just kind of wondering, you know, like, I mean, if they're integrated into our CIP and our Public Works process, and a lot of the plans are being prepared by developers or around a development agreement, really would there be that much more to do?
It's also the non-infrastructures. It's that person who runs those non-infrastructural programs.
Engagement, enforcement.
The education.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You have to include everything.
That helps to explain. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Jennifer, Rita, Ed, Gabe, everyone, thanks for your hard work on this. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to shift gears back to, our next agenda item tonight is a discussion of the Public Arts Program and Commission, and then there's an actual ordinance that goes with it. Items six and seven are really kind of one in the same. The way we'll take this is first, there's a couple more people from public input. The public who asked to speak, we'll take those very quickly. Then we'll take questions first, from questions from us, so that we can be clear on what it is we're talking about, and then we can open the floor up for discussion. So on the Public Arts Program and Commission, the first member of the public who I have card who wanted to speak at the time of the item is Kilo Matson, oh, Kylo Matson, I hope I pronounced it correctly, and on deck Meadow, Meadow Jones. Go right ahead, Kylo.
Hi, I'd like to thank you for listening to all of us, give our two cents on what's going on. I currently reside at Fairview Avenue in Urbana. And I went to, I came to Urbana ten years ago to go to the U of I and study in the dance, oh, thank you. I came here to study in the dance department at the U of I, and then left to be one of those people to go out where there are oceans and pretty views out in San Francisco. And yet I keep returning to Urbana at least once a year, because I find that Urbana has something to offer here that San Francisco doesn't. And that a little bit can go a long way here, in that getting this arts funding, you can see really tangible differences that doesn't get lost in the huge, big mess of a big city like San Francisco. And so I have a company with a friend of mine out there called Change of State Performance Project, and we keep coming back to perform at places like the Independent Media Center, and, as well as other places around the United States. And as an emerging company, we're looking for more places and more resources and ways of engaging with the communities that we're traveling to. One of our pieces and main projects we're working on now actually regards water and how people engage with water in their daily lives. And we find that by having a play around water and having the support of the community and grassroots organizations, that we can create a dialogue with people, our audiences, and create more interest and ways of thinking in a creative way around problem solving. So that's another benefit of art that goes beyond creating a different environment around you. I'm also a somatic movement therapist, and means fancy way of saying you help people become more in their bodies. And I teach classes, and that's another way of getting funding towards the arts, is not only in terms of infrastructure and performances, but also in terms of classes. And that by people becoming more aware of their bodies, that there's a greater way of increasing mental health and physical health and learning stability for children, but also a way to negotiate new situations and figure out new ways of interacting with each other, which I think is a great thing to offer for a small town. And I hope that their, this funding comes through in order to support myself and other people who want to create work around here. So thank you.
One question.
Yeah, maybe, I guess maybe I have a question. Do you see the, the role of the city to be a possible employer for art persons?
I think that, yes, the city has a role of employing and as a way of, through grants, funding other projects going on and working in collaboration, to provide the space for art to happen.
When you talk about teaching classes, it's a possible fundraising aspect, does that mean that you would teach the class pro bono, and the funds that you got from it would go to the art district or the funding of the art, the art program?
I was talking about teaching classes as a way, something that I do now and continue to, hope to continue to do. Right now, I teach classes pro bono, because I'm interested in people learning. I'd like to recognize artists as getting paid. It's something I'm working towards, so it's not just pro bono work, but also that I'm recognized for the worth of what I do. And I am, as part of that, interested in sending that, redirecting that money towards things that I believe in, like...
I ask that question because most of the time when an artist is doing a training class or teaching, it's really part of his own support network. I mean, that's pretty much how you survive through the, you know, by providing classes or any workshops. So I was wondering how that related to the fundraising aspect. So I was just kind of, kind of curious about that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, Kylo.
Thank you.
Next, we have Meadow Jones, and on deck, Georgia Morgan. Meadow wanted to speak to both the Bike Path and the Public Arts Program. I think she left. She did have to leave. Okay, I saw her leave. She wanted to be in support of the Bike Path Program and the Public Arts Program. So next, we have Georgia Morgan, and on deck, Luis Caballero. Georgia?
Georgia Morgan, I live on Nevada Street in Urbana. I wanted to speak in support of the Public Arts Program. When I visited a friend in the hospital in Iowa City a couple of years ago, I was just blown away by the art in the hospital. It was provided, I learned later, by an arts in public spaces program that required some small percentage of the cost of the construction to go towards display of art. And it was all, it wasn't a statue in front of the hospital. It was all over the hospital. Downstairs, in the really depressing part where you register when you go in and you get your prescriptions when you're dazed going out, there was a big glassed-in window box that had display of metalwork by a graduate metals class, avant-garde jewelry, avant-garde objects. But, you know, this is an eight-story hospital, and every floor in the areas that were public areas, not in the patient rooms, but in all the public areas, in all the corridors, there was display case after display case. It was like going into a museum. What's so wonderful about this? Well, it's for people that don't go to museums, and they are exposed, and it was, you know, it wasn't all graduate student art either. They had Mark Rothko's, and they had Jackson Pollock's, and they had indigenous art from South America. And it was just everything from all over the place, and it was just wonderful. And I would really like to see something like that. Why, you know, why didn't, doesn't Urbana have anything like that? I would really like to see Urbana have something like that. I don't have any opinion on whether it should be one percent of a million dollars, or one percent of half a million dollars, or that triggers it, or, and I would hate to see it, you know, go down in flames, because people are worried that their territory is getting stepped on. I just think this is a really great idea, and we should get something off the ground. We can perfect it as we go along.
Okay, we have one question from the mayor.
Can you tell me what hospital it was in Iowa City?
University of Iowa Medical Center.
Okay, I wonder, do you think it was a city program, or do you think it's part of the state?
I think it's a state program.
Okay, maybe what we should do is, is see how they funded and how it got started. But, you know, I think, I like to see...
It's not, it's not a, as far as I could understand, when I asked somebody about it, you know, they thought it was an absolutely normal thing for, for some governmental agency to have. I, I don't know the details of how it worked in Iowa City.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Georgia. Okay, next, we have Luis Caballero. I hope I pronounced your name right. Come right up and tell us your name and address. Thanks.
Sure. My name is Luis Caballero, and I actually live in Champaign. And I'm here, thank you, thank you. I'm here as a member of the community, because I advocate for the arts very strongly. I actually work over at the Granite Art Museum at the university as the education coordinator, or one of them at least. And I'm here to say that, as part of my job, I try to reach out to at-risk populations in both Champaign and Urbana. And for whatever reason, oftentimes, members of those communities cannot make it to the museum. Either it's just a matter of accessibility, or just not being comfortable going to the university. And I feel that this arts program that's being proposed is a great way to make the arts more accessible to at-risk communities. Furthermore, I feel that this would be a great opportunity to start a partnership with the university. I, I cannot endorse the arts program one way or the other on behalf of the university, but I can say that should it be approved, there are opportunities to work with the Granite Art Museum. We already work with other community-based organizations such as Forty North, so there are those types of programs currently available, and we're always looking for new opportunities to work with new organizations. I think that museums are a very untapped resource in the community oftentimes, and this is a great opportunity for the City of Urbana and the Granite Art Museum to work together.
Thanks. Any questions? Thanks, Luis.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next, we have Michael Brun, and then on deck Karma Ibsen. Michael, good evening. Yeah, have a seat. The microphone's a little mouse-like looking thing there.
That thing?
Yep. You say your name and address.
My name is Michael Brun, or Michael Brun, and I'm from eight oh six East Washington in Urbana. And there's a very famous management consultant who died a number of years ago. He pretty much invented the whole genre of how-to management, Peter Drucker from Austria. And he said one way to judge any proposal is not just by what it allows you to start doing, but what it allows you to stop doing. And I think that one of the things which one can, when something comes before a committee that calls for raising funds by taxes or any other means, it's worthwhile to consider that possibility. And one way to view the funding for something like an arts program is if it saves one trip to Chicago, one trip to Bloomington Normal, because I'm sorry I can't make it, there's an event in Urbana, you've paid for it. I think at least the average taxpayer would have paid for it already three times. So that would be one way to consider, to use a criterion to judge whether this program is worthwhile, which each taxpayer could think about individually, and which also the council could consider, try to put itself in the feet of every single resident here altogether. So in the interest of saving both money and time, I will thank you for yours and finish with that.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Michael. Next, we'll hear from Karma Ibsen, and then Lori Caterini is on deck. Karma?
I just wrote in that I'm supporting it. It's not a...
Thank you, I see, okay. In support of, thank you very much. Yep, you're on the record then, in support of the Public Arts Program. Lori Caterini also chose not to address the committee, but asked at her position in support of the Public Arts Program... support of the Public Arts Program be on record. Lori, did you want to? Okay. If you'd like to speak, you're absolutely welcome. Come right on up. I apologize. Have a seat and the microphone is somewhere there next to the mouse. Good evening.
Hi. I live in Champaign. I'm an alien. And I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm an artist and first of all, I'd like to say how fortunate I feel to live here because there's such a broad amount of opportunities in various arts, dance and, and music. And I'm a visual artist and I would just like to speak about the way that the arts are part of the fabric of our lives. I was in Chicago and was walking to the Dog Beach with my friend and I walked underneath a viaduct and there was a mosaic and it was a collaboration between kids and members of the community and artists. And it was just so beautiful and it was the potential of just being like those times where you're just walking and you're tuning out because you don't want to look. And it was just really poetic and lovely and it was part of my whole experience of experiencing the lake and the whole weekend with my friends and also thinking of all the people who, who helped with it, with their, because the, the people in the community helped with the planning and with the construction. So, these things like, and then I imagined if I lived there, that just is part of your day and your life. And that's one of the great things about being part of Champaign and, and also Urbana is the things that you see in each day. And these things make people want to keep living here and they make people want to also locate here. And as an artist, I would like to say that funding is really important to have our projects be possible. And last year, I had a piece in the Boneyard in the late-night space and I received funding from the Illinois Arts Council and I also received funding from Forty North. And both those funds, I couldn't have done my project without it. And so, I would say that it would help all of us who are making things and all of you who want to look at things if you would support the arts and give more opportunities for funding and to keep the community vibrant and keep people here and not have us go to Chicago. So, anyway.
Thanks, Lori.
So, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thanks. We had one last person who turned in a card about the bike plan. Rich Fur wanted to have his name go in the record in support of the Bike Master Plan. That was all the public comment cards I received tonight. So, we will then move on to discussion and the ordinance. They're really sort of all one topic and one, one item in the packet tonight. So, I think maybe I will actually let Tom introduce our staff person, the new Public Arts Coordinator, and then we'll take questions first before we kind of get into discussion and back and forth. That's the sort of order we'll go. Tom?
Evening. Just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce everyone to Anna Halkhalter. She is the city's Public Arts Coordinator. She provided staff support for the Public Art Task Force, did considerable research on other public art programs, and also organized the public input opportunities through this process. So, Anna's done a lot of great work related to this and most of which you have before you this evening, so.
Welcome, Anna.
Thank you. Good evening. Urbana's taken many strides in its support for the arts since September of 2005 when it identified the creation of a public arts program in the city council goals. The city council common goals are outlined in your memo and the implementation strategies are included describing how to implement a public arts program. In September of 2006, Community Development hired an arts intern, now called Public Arts Coordinator. And in November of 2006, the city council established the Public Arts Task Force to evaluate the feasibility of creating a permanent public arts program. And we had an excellent group of 17 arts, artists, arts administrators, and community organizers representing a range of diverse media and backgrounds. And some of those members have been present today and some of them are still present this evening. After 12 months of research and preparation, the task force has created a recommendation for the public arts program. And that is the topic of our discussion. Throughout the year, the task force identified how important it was to hear public input and created several opportunities, multiple opportunities to hear public input. Events targeted for artists and arts organizations as well as the business community and the public in general. We held regular meetings throughout the year and I'd like to point out the community input report which you've received. This report highlights all of the public input that we've received through the designated public input formats. So, we had two luncheons and attended a few community events and accepted public comments. And we asked questions about barriers to the arts, the involvement in the arts, goals that the participants had in terms of the arts, and then recommendations on the program. So, I hope, I hope you've had a chance to look at this input report. I'll highlight the Urbana Public Arts Program Proposal, which is included in your memo. It's Exhibit C. This program proposal is recommended by the Public Arts Task Force and includes a recommended budget. And we also, the task force also has a draft ordinance establishing a Public Arts Commission and a permanent public arts program, which is Exhibit D in your packet. These documents, I should note that the, the budget that's included in the proposal does not constitute a formal staff recommendation at that time that will be presented with the usual staff budget and that the-- The program and the ordinance both reflect extensive research on other public arts programs and community input received through the input processes. The program outlines a mission for the Public Arts Commission. It identifies goals for the program, value statements, roles and responsibilities of this commission. It proposes a funding mechanism and budget. It describes additional policies, guidelines, additional program areas, and potential, and a periodic program review. I'll describe a little bit more about the process. In January of 2008, the task force completed a final draft of the Public Arts Program. And again, valuing the input from the public, distributed this, this program draft to a large list of artists and partners, including participants to, of the business community input session and the artists and arts organization input session. It was distributed through the Urbana Business Association to all Forty North members as well as the board members, to the Independent Media Center members, and to the Community Center for the Arts members. The task force received public comments and at their last meeting on February 12th, they made changes to the program based on that input. The task force additionally made changes, including changing a recommended budget benchmark from $3 per capita to $4 per capita and decreasing the threshold for the percent for arts program on municipal buildings, decreasing the threshold for eligible programs from 1,000, 1 million in construction costs to 500,000 or more. And the reasons for such are enclosed in your memo. Consistent with the January 28th proposal, staff recommends that a $3 per capita starting benchmark budget goal be established and that municipal building projects with a construction cost of 1 million or more be eligible for the percent for art program. The reasons are also, for that are enclosed in your packet. I'll, I'll point out that the budget that's included is a recommendation from the Public Arts Task Force. There are actually two budgets included. One describes the budget based on a $4 per capita benchmark budget and the other describes a $3 per capita benchmark scenario. And you can see those in your packet. Both allow for a regular full-time staff person to administer a range of activities and acquisitions and you can see the differences in some other areas described in those budgets. I'll point out now the ordinance, which is to establish a public arts commission and a public arts program.
And Anna, are you reading from the addended one?
I'm just about to get to that.
Thank you.
The, in, in your original packet, you received an ordinance which is coming as a recommendation from the Public Arts Task Force. Since we distributed the packets, we received input from the legal division, legal department, which suggested we should change a few, a few elements of the administrative provision in the ordinance and then may, sorry, excuse me, it's March. The March 10th version, which you received at your table when you arrived today, is the version which includes changes based on legal recommendations and the changes are Also in your packet, you find a comparison of other municipal public art programs. So, you can get a sense of the kind of context that Urbana is in. We tried to get a range of cities from around the country as well as finding examples that have similar populations and, and look at what they do. And the community input report is something I already touched on. When the 2008, 2009 budget is developed, actual budget projections will be reviewed at that time. It should be noted that the ordinance, which you are reviewing today, and the program proposal establishes budgeting goals and a percent for art program on eligible municipal building projects. Additionally, it creates a formal commission, which will help foster a dynamic, innovative Urbana where all residents, emerging artists, established artists, and non-artists alike may merge with the arts in its many forms and where engage, may engage with the arts. They won't actually become the arts. They'll engage with the arts in its many forms and where artists thrive and are valued. So, at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So, yeah, first, we'll sort of go down the line and take questions from people. Before we get into discussion, I just want to make sure we all know what we're talking about. I see Danielle's hand. Danielle, go right ahead.
Just, I did want to present a couple of documents that I laid out. Could I do that as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, I also, I passed out some documents to the council. There's a document called Where, Where There Is Art, There Is. And I was asked to, to talk about the ways in which the arts leverages existing programs that we have. And so, this is a document I created to show that better academic performance, higher degree of literacy in student self-esteem, more economic activity and retention of talented employees, less crime and vandalism, and a stronger sense of place and history, and a more tolerant, more diverse community, better neighborhood cohesion and identity are all things where there is art, there is these things. And so, I wanted to, to point that out to you. And then underneath that document that I passed out, there's two other documents. One's called Art That Meets Needs and the other is called Public Art in Action. And those two documents were created by Sarah Canaus, who was a graduate student in 2003 and 2004. And I asked her to explain the arts and how it could, you know, give some illustrations for how art could meet public needs and also illustrate public art in action engaged with the community so that we had some illustrations as to what we were talking about. The last thing I, I have is that I have a, just a brief story, which is that when I went to, my grandfather broke his hip and he was in the hospital. He was in a nursing home. I went to visit him and I played music for him. Unfortunately, I knew only kind of sorrowful folk music. And at some point, I stopped and said, you know, Grandpa Harry, is there something that I can do? And he said, "Put something on the ceiling." And I said, "Okay." And I looked up and I realized he couldn't move. He's stuck in a bed. He's looking up at the ceiling at all times. He cannot move his body at all. And he's begging me to put something on the ceiling that he can look at. And so, I think of, Patch Adams has asked us, he's a doctor who promotes joy in medicine, and he has asked us to try to define health, not just to define illness. And when he talks about health, he says, "Part of health is the desire to live." And one of the things that the arts does is that it creates an environment in which we want to continue to live. It's not good enough that we be hooked up to tubes and that we breathe through those tubes and that our organs are clean of impurities. It's also the case that every day, we need to wake up and want to continue living and the arts is integral to that process. So, I wanted to share that story with you. And I'm also happy as the chair of the Public Arts Program to help to answer any questions.
Thanks. Okay. So, are there any questions from committee members about the program, about what's before us? Charlie?
Yeah, real, one question and then a suggested change on the ordinance. In the road, would road projects be counted as in this, you know, you talk about the percentage here and, you know, they're, they sound like building projects, but it's not really defined. I mean, we build roads too.
As it's described in the ordinance, it states that would be municipal building projects and I believe it does exclude streets.
Okay. I was trying to figure that out.
On page two of the new thing that legal passed out, you can, there's a definition of municipal building projects.
Oh, okay. So, if you--
Project means a construction project, which involves the construction or alteration of a municipal building with an original budget cost.
Building, okay. Gotcha.
And above, it says, "It means all municipal building projects except service facilities not normally visited by the public continuing to go above construction costs."
I read it too fast.
I was going backwards.
Okay. I would like to point out that there are 14 goals, not 13. You have an earlier copy, I think, included. And would we, you know, it's not part of the ordinance here, but in terms of the budget, I know there are two different budgets laid out. Who determines the allocation of that budget? Would that, you know, you know, you get, right now, it's, there's so much for commissioned work, so much for certain programs, and so much for education. One of the things I heard tonight that I, I think is, we need to hear is that programs for high school and, and younger students should maybe get a little higher priority. So, you know, in terms of my own thinking, you know, I would, I would want to see a little more money go to, to that kind of education as opposed to just commissioned work. So, you know, how, how will that, you know, if and when we have money to do this, how would that budget be allocated and determined?
Anna, do you or Libby? I have--
I can help to answer that too. Well, the fact here and providing you sample budgets, hopefully you can see this, that we would come forward with a budget recommendation reflecting the goals put forward here and there would be those line items. And the commission, working with staff, would spend funds within those line items according to the mission and the goals and priorities set forth by the commission. So, if there was, so first of all, yes, council would need to approve that budget annually. Mayor would put that forward. And if there were deviations from that budget, just like anything else in the city budget, it would need to come for a budget amendment. And that includes changes in the amounts or the allocation. So, if there was special youth program that wasn't anticipated and didn't fit within those line items, that would have to come forward as a--
Well, I heard a couple described tonight as being fairly successful. A lot of the literature that, you know, one of the things I was looking for were some of the stuff that Danielle provided here, you know, some, some research behind the statements that were made earlier. And a lot of these have to do with, with basically youth audiences. And so, I'd like to see-- And so I'd like to see if we're going to do this, more money in that arena than just commissioned artworks.
Okay. And I don't know, Anna and Danielle, did you each want to have a chance to add to Libby's answer? Go ahead to Anna.
I'll just point out that for the 2000... Thank you. Point out that for the 2008-2009 budget year, the task force is recommending basically two program, two programs within the program, which would be two granting programs. One would be for a national level, and one would be on a local level, and community organizations could, could propose educational endeavors through those granting programs.
Danielle?
If you look at page three, top of number two, under Roles and Responsibilities of the Public Arts Commission, it says the commission will propose to city council an annual public arts program, which is what Ms. Tyler was talking about, that identifies specific program goals, means of achievement, possible expenditures and sources of revenue, schedule of execution, necessary resources and responsibilities, and an implementation plan. This program, if the council moves this forward, what will happen next is that a commission will be created. And that commission, by the mayor and the council, will be a nine-person commission. And that commission will get started very quickly on a, a public arts program proposal for '08-'09. And that program proposal would come back to the city council to say, here's what we want to fund in the fiscal year '08-'09. And this is what we consider to be the arts priorities. Now, the task force has been hearing from folks from historic preservation. We heard an update on the Philo Road Plan. Anything that comes to, to the council that is relevant to the arts has also been proposed to the task force with a similar kind of presentation about that. So the task force kind of will roll into, and we're looking for people to apply for that commission, but we need to establish that commission. The task force would then bring it back to the council and say, here's a set of things that we want to do, and this is what it looks like. So by voting on this today, it's a little bit, two separate things. One is the, let's get the commission going. And then the commission will be coming back to council with some specific recommendations for this year and working with the mayor in putting together a budget to fund those things. That said, the task force spoke about there being a benchmark. A benchmark of something that we're shooting for, that would be the amount of money that we would like to, to have available to allocate to the arts in any given year. And because it's a public arts fund, those monies could be put in the fund and could accumulate over several years for some larger projects as well. So I think it's important to note that the council continues to hold the purse strings of the program. And it's also the case that the, the commission will be bringing to the council proposals, a picture of what the priorities would be for that year. And so the priorities, and we, the, the task force has spoken very highly of how important arts education is. Lifetime learning in the arts is one of the program goals. And so if it, if the council says that that is, should be the priority in '08-'09, then the commission will take that into consideration in coming back to the council with recommendations. So it's important, if you have particular emphases you think should be there, and we've heard several, then that's something that you need to tell the commission about so that they can consider that in their proposal to council.
Tom?
And then the last, the last thing on it, I would suggest that in the, on page two of the, of the ordinance, under the mission statement, I think it reads a little better if you say that the Urbana Public Arts Commission recognizes the arts as essential to the vitality of our city. We don't need the word is, is established to recognize. You know, we're just simply, it's a mission, so we're, we're, you know, by just establishing this, we are recognizing that the arts is essential. So I don't think we need four words when one word will do.
Okay. Libby, you had a response?
Just talking about the upcoming budget year, it could take some time to get the commission fully appointed. So the task force recognizing the time of year, the task force has worked hard to prepare the sample budget. And so we do have some guidance for this year. Just looking ahead, and we're already in early stages of budget preparation, so it may be difficult to get everybody appointed and, and brought up to speed and make the budget deadlines. But we have some really good information, lots of information here that can help to guide that process.
Okay, Dennis, questions?
Maybe I have a few. Is the purpose of the, the recommended, the recommendations for art events or grants that are going to be created by the commission for, to support existing programs or events the city is actually going to be involved in during the year? Or do you see these as being completely new entities of art experience?
I suspect it would be a combination of both. And that would again be up to the discretion of city council until the commission is established. And the commission will establish policies, which will be approved by the council. And then at that point, the program could begin, and it would operate based on that mechanism. So it hasn't quite been established.
Tom?
Just to elaborate a little on that, when Anna said it would be a combination of both, what, what I potentially could envision is, say that the commission establishes small grants for musical performances. Someone that has not performed a musical performance publicly before could make a proposal to start a new public performance. However, I think someone who runs an existing public performance could also come to the commission and ask for some money to do so. So when Anna says it could be a combination of both, I think that's an example of it could be new events, but it could also be someone that's looking for support for an existing event.
Okay.
Also, in the sample budget, you can see that there's a special initiatives item. And that could provide funding for city programs that may already be existing.
But which may need help in the arts for some reason, okay. Can you tell me a little bit about the process? I mean, I think art in public places, i.e., working, one of the big aspects of the proposal is like, sort of like a 1% for the arts for major construction, municipal construction or development. So how is, how the, this is put into place and how the potential developers who are bringing projects are going to be fulfilling projects within the city? Is there going to be some kind of structure where they are going to know how to accommodate the expected public art? And how is the, I assume that if it's, if there's a construction situation, the kind of public art that you're looking for is going to be permanent rather than ephemeral? Because, because you're, you're using some of the funds, construction funds, to allocate an enhancement to the building. So can we assume that that would be a, a built-in structural fund, like a mosaic wall or, you know, a mosaic floor or a painting mural thing or architectural detail, rather than a performance art piece that happens to take place once in the building and then is lost forever?
Anna, and then Tom.
Okay. Well, as the arts is described in the, in the ordinance and in the program, the arts includes all media, so it, it isn't specific to permanent pieces. However, like mosaic and adding a physical alteration to the building, that would not be excluded. Something else that's been described as a need is to archive and show documentation of any project. So in the percent for art on municipal buildings program, it could be that a dance piece would be installed in the hallway for a week. And, and it would be a significant event based on the large budget that it would probably have. And archiving that and, and creating a way for the public who then attend the building to create a way for them to continue to see that installation in some other form of documentation could be established. And also, also to bring up a point you mentioned, you, you wondered about private developers and the municipal, this percent for art program that's being proposed would only apply to municipal buildings. So it would only be city of Urbana buildings. So it would be something like the fire station or the civic center. It doesn't create any restrictions or requirements on private development.
So, so the city would, if it was a city, if it was a municipal building or facility, say it was the dog pound or the county garage or something like that, or, you know, a court, you know, addition to the, to the city building, the city would allocate or indicate a certain amount, a certain percent of the construction cost would be allocated to having art established or even happen.
Yeah, Danielle, go ahead.
Okay, so this, Megan Wolf gave this to me, and this is the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs Individual Artists, Artist Fellowships. And for example, this is a book that they put together from just this single year of 2005, where they talk about every single artist that they supported in Los Angeles, which is a fairly large town, so they have a lot of moolah to spread around. There's a section called Literary Artists and a section called Performing Artists, and they document things that the literary and performance, uh, performance artists did in public spaces. And these documents then remain in, so there, there is some kind of like, you know, kind of physical trace of what happened. There's also a lot of photography of the, of the speaking, and there's a lot of multimedia capturing of, of what happened. And they have a website that you can go to where you can actually go and also see the poetry that was performed in front of the Urbana Free Library on its opening day. So that could exist. There could be a kiosk, people could have access to it. There already is plenty of web access in the library. So it's those kinds of things I think we need to, to think in terms, when we think of multimedia, we need to think in terms of documenting what has occurred as a historical archive and then being able to show that to the public so that it has a lifespan that's beyond just the moment that it was performed. And there's lots of ways to do that. So this is an example, I'll pass it down to you, and you can take a look at the literary arts. But, and, and the task force spoke about what it, what, the, the percentage of the arts that would be used to document and archive and preserve, which would be a portion of the arts on top of the 1%. So if you look, it says, and up to another half percent that would be used to document and archive, et cetera. The reason that we picked half a million instead of a million, this is the task force speaking, is because we thought that, we thought about things that may be coming up in the future that the city would be doing, because we just finished a whole bunch of things, and they were all over a million. The civic center renovations would be coming up, and there's a chance that that would be less than a million dollars. And the task force felt that 1% of half a million, which is 5,000, was a sufficient amount of funds to do something with, whether it be in a physical medium or something that's less physical, and then we would document it and make it available in the civic center.
Okay, well, I've got maybe more questions about that. The word out ended discussion, so I'll have to go. Questions first. I know the mayor also had mentioned she had questions, and I saw Lynn's hand up. I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to ask questions and know what it is we're talking about. Did you have any other questions, Dennis, or?
I'll wait.
Okay. Mayor, you had a few.
I wonder if you, did you document how much we're spending now? On art?
I, I can make a...
Libby?
I can make a guess. I think we've got about...
No, did the task force document?
Oh, with the city is spending now?
Yeah.
Okay, I could tell you what's in the budget for this year based on...
No, I mean, we, we gave 25,000, I believe, to the Station Theater.
Right.
With no overhead, and all of our events that we have for the birthday celebration have art in them. So when the bicycle people were giving their report, and they were talking about how their goal is to increase 50% in five years, I think, you know, that's a very good approach to take. And I think we have to sort of know where we are now and where we would like to go. My other question was, did you see what the Urbana Park District spends on Meadow Brook Park and how that program evolved?
Anna, did you want to answer that? Go ahead.
We have done research on how the Meadow Brook Park was started. In fact, the founding organizer of Meadow Brook Sculpture Park served on the Public Arts Task Force, Robin Hall. And I know Danielle had conversations with him in previous years throughout this time about Meadow Brook. And Meadow Brook, the Meadow Brook, the Wendell Sculpture Garden functions by coordinating two-year leases with artists. And so most of the sculptures are shown and displaying in that way. So an artist will create a piece on their own, as they would, and then the park district invites or receives a proposal from them, which illustrates a sculpture that they have, and then they create a two-year lease. Some of the sculptures are then purchased, but most of them are on this two-year lease. So it's actually a low-cost way of displaying a variety of works of art.
Okay, I, I mean, I did appoint Robin Hall for that reason. And he, when I asked him how much they spent, he said something like $26,000 the first year. So that's, I think things need to be put in perspective of what are successful projects that are going on right now? Where are we right now? And then where do we want to go?
Danielle, did you have an additional answer?
Yeah, just on the issue of Meadow Brook, I had a, the first conversation I had in 2003 was with Robin Hall, who's been really supportive throughout this whole process. He's out of town this evening, otherwise he'd be here. And he said, he said very clearly that he and another person went up to Chicago to the pier, Navy Pier, and they looked at artwork, and they chose which one they wanted, and they approached the artists and said, we'd like to rent your sculpture for the Wendell Sculpture Garden. And the artist frequently said yes and made some kinds of arrangements. And so there was no, there was no process with the community whatsoever. There's no interface with the community. There's no priority setting by the board, the purpose or board that I am aware of. There's, and, and so as a result, it's two people's vision. It's a great thing. I love the Wendell Sculpture, and I think it's good stewardship of those two folks to have looked, you know, looked for a diversity of types of forms. But I don't think that you can compare that program to the City of Urbana program that's being proposed, because we're proposing something where, first of all, we're talking about acquisitions, so that's a little bit different, so they'll be permanent. And then the second is, we are proposing a nest for, for the community to be involved in the process of selection, selecting the artwork, citing the artwork, et cetera. And so as a result, you know, that's why we're asking for a full-time person, and we would like the community to be involved from the beginning to the end. So that's a really different kind of project than what the park district has done.
Libby, I was wondering, I think, to the question of how much is in the current budget, I thought maybe you were doing some back-of-the-envelope calculations. Did you want to speak a little more to that?
I was just thinking of all the things we are doing with the arts, and we can certainly tally them up, because we do support 40 North and the Boneyard Arts Festival, and we did incorporate the arts in the Urbana Free Library project with Cherry Alley and the sculpture. And it's, you know, we've had music and the birthday celebrations, we had a grant for the Station Theater, we have the Art in the Park project, which we supplemented this year. We have, so we are doing a lot, ad hoc, not a program structure. Anna's salary, and those are just, but, you know, we can do a more thorough search and tally those up. And hopefully, you know, Dennis's question about private developers, we don't want to get into doing an impact fee type of situation, but by modeling participation in the arts, we can see, like... we can see, like, what's happened at the pines, where the Atkins Group employed the same sculptor who did the sculpture for the Urbana Free Library. And so, we're hoping to see that more and more. But, you know, I think there's good points to make. We're not starting from ground zero at all.
Okay. Lynn?
So, would all those types of activities and expenditures that you just described be included now and captured in this budget? So, the idea would be that we'd capture that all?
I think many of them would be.
So, I, because that's my question, and I'll, I'll wait till discussion, but my question is, what, what's, have we analyzed yet, you know, the financial impact? Because I know we're entering into kind of a tight budget year, and so that's a concern. And I think we need to think about how it will impact our finances and what might have to go, if anything, or, just so we know what we're making a decision on.
Dennis?
If the city is already engaged in quite a few support of the arts events that you've just actually enumerated for us, Libby, would, is there enough additional material or activity to justify a full-time position at this time for an arts coordinator in the city? Are you foreseeing that this position would then take over a lot of responsibilities that are being handled by other departments to, to make it a, an actual 40-hour week per, you know, consistent work week?
I think it would be pretty close. I think there's other related activities in economic development that others are doing that this position could assist in. And Anna's work, just to get to this point, it's been 25 to 30 hours a week to make this progress. We have lots of other projects and programs. I guess the difference is actually having an official municipal public arts program. Setting that up, of course, will continue to work efficiently and nobody sits idle. They, you know, if there's not an agenda that, that month, there will be other activities, and they will be arts-related and economic development-related. So, I definitely could see this being a very productive, fruitful position. And if there's not funding for 100%, then we will make do, and we, we understand that it's going to be a tight year. But, you know, I think that we can, we can make do and build, if necessary.
Is it likely that you would augment the job description of the person who is heading the, the art commission to include other duties that would not be directly related? If you have, if you have a vision of making a shared task for that position's work?
I think that's quite possible. You know, we have our market at the square. I just think there's so many things, and we would always, all our positions have.
Multiple heads.
Other duties as assigned, and we would want, we would want a little flexibility there. I think that would be practical.
I mean, there are many historic preservation questions that have come up for the city that would require, you know, numerous hours of tasking as well. So, I'm just wondering, it sounds like the position's duties are, are going to be focused on somewhat on some coordination, but two grant proposals per year. And I'm just kind of wondering, are those responsibilities heavy enough to, to occupy a full-time position?
I think when you think about events and how much time those take, and, you know, working with the local artist community and projects, and we have our newspaper art project, and that's been time-consuming, working on the contract and working with the artists and working with the selection committee. It does take time, but I think we all help each other out. And if there's an event at the market that might involve performing arts, it might have a preservation angle, who knows? We would expect that person to participate. I could see it fitting in very well with what we do and expanding that. And historic preservation is, I mean, that's just a whole other skill set, and we're addressing, hoping to address that need with our planning staff.
Can I just clarify? I think this position, tell me if I'm wrong, and Anna in this position has also served a lot of other things, like going to streetscape committee meetings and serving there, or doing other things in economic development, or being our rep to 40 North.
Right.
I mean, there's other duties that have already been rolled in.
And I think those would need to continue, because we can't have the arts coordinator working in isolation. I think they would need to work with these other groups and these other projects. And I think it's added value to have that perspective in all these venues.
Okay. It's, it's about 10 o'clock. I want to transition into discussion mode. There's an actual ordinance to create the commission that we can get to. It is 10 o'clock, so we have one hour left. Let's see, I said, Lynn, did you have a hand up? And then we'll go back around and do maybe Danielle and Robert. Lynn, go ahead first.
I'm supportive of the program, and I'm supportive of moving you to full-time, because it seems like from a, you know, she's already doing 30 hours a week, and it seems like, you know, even adding a little more emphasis is going to require that, that push. What I'm concerned about is just the level of funding and our commitment to it. And that, that's my concern. And I, and what's going to have to go, if anything, for us to make this happen. However, given what I heard Libby say, that we have already spent, you know, if we truly roll in those things that we might spend next year into this bucket, then maybe we aren't as far off in terms of our, our budget plans. I mean, that's, that's my only concern. I, I don't want us to bite off more than we can chew and make a commitment that's ongoing for a number of years, when we've got other things too that we need to think about in terms of the cost. And I, I'd be more inclined, if we, if we do end up with a, a, a certain amount of money dictated per capita, I'd be more inclined to the $3 original than the four.
Okay. We'll start again at this end. Danielle, and then Robert. Danielle?
For the purposes of us moving forward, I'd like to make a motion. And the motion would be for us to approve the proposal to establish a public arts commission and public arts program, as, with a couple of changes. The first being, it, it would be the task force recommendation with the incorporation of Charlie's recommendation that the mission read at, with the word recognizes, instead of is established to recognize. And also.
Can you put easier a line on that one?
It's, um, page, page one, mission statement.
It's in the.
And it's also in the ordinance. The ordinance flows from the, and then you had also mentioned that we had 14 goals, including intergovernmental cooperation as the 14th, so there would just be that correction in the document. So, I make that proposal, and then I would attach to it the updated ordinance language as provided by Ron O'Neal.
Okay, so, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Confused.
Oh, okay. Is there confusion? I want to make sure. The motion I heard was.
You know, we have an ordinance that we need to deal with, but, so that's, that, why are we talking about this whole, this whole other item with an ordinance at the same time?
Um, because to, it's my understanding that we have to adopt the program, including a bunch of things that aren't included in the ordinance.
Yeah, the way the staff recommendation was written up, there's, there's the program document and the ordinance, and we would move approval of both of them in order, the ordinance would kick off the commission, and the program would describe the public arts program.
Is that your understanding, Libby, that we need to do today?
We were hoping to have a motion on the program, to see a support for that, and then a separate.
Okay.
Roll call or whatever on the ordinance.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the task force recommendation for the public arts program with the single change in the mission statement from is established to recognize to recognizes.
A friendly amendment. I'd like that.
There wasn't a second yet, just for.
I'll second it then.
Okay.
And I'd like to offer us a friendly amendment here to include as part of the program the factual information that you provided tonight.
Okay.
That, to me, is an important piece of this. And is this, this is a recommendation to go to council for approval, right?
Correct.
Danielle, is that okay, the friendly inclusion of those other materials?
So, so basically, it would be the packet with where there is art, there is, and then the art that meets needs and the public arts in action, which I can make available. Actually, I've, I've sent it already. So, that would be included. And if I could speak to the motion, since there's a motion a second.
Yeah. Could I have a clarification before you do?
Okay.
Yeah, what? Point of clarification, I guess. So, are we talking about, we have, we have a draft ordinance provided by legal, but we also have a proposal for public arts program. So, are we actually adopting as written? You're saying Exhibit C. What, what is the statement that we're adopting as a public arts program?
Uh, let's see what it says in the resolution establishing a public arts task force.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah.
You could include to your motion with the changes provided by legal to the ordinance?
This, the current motion, I think, doesn't include the ordinance even. It's just for, it's just Exhibit C, the proposal for the public arts program. We can do this in two pieces. Libby?
And I think there is kind of a verb missing, and the prob, probably the best verb for the program would be to endorse it.
Is that accepted by Charlie and Danielle as a friendly?
Yeah, so it'd be an endorsement of the proposal, the, the task force recommended proposal.
Basically Exhibit C.
Yeah, and just to.
With, uh.
And then.
Yeah?
And then just to clarify, we're endorsing the program. We're not endorsing any expenditures at this point.
Okay, correct. So, Danielle, you wanted to speak to the motion, and then, then there's a couple more questions here about it.
Yeah, it just, and I have been really sick, so my head is very fuzzy. I'm trying to hold it together here. The, I, I guess I wanted to speak to the issue of whether or not art is fluff, or if it's nice, or if it's optional. And I, I wanted to, in addition to the document that, thanks, Charlie, I think it's a great idea to include it with the program, where there is art, there is. I'd also like to say that I don't think that if there were not already significant amounts of arts and culture in Champaign, Urbana, I don't think any of us would live here. And that a world without art is prison. It's an emotionally deadly space. And the reason that the public has a responsibility to invest in art is because it demonstratably increases the quality of life across many vectors that we work as a community. And I wanted to answer the question, what do you mean, the arts extends what we already do? Isn't it just sculpture in front of the new building? And to respond, I'd like to say that the Urbana Public Arts Program will support the arts in all of its forms, music, dance, performance, sculpture, spoken word, et cetera. And I just wanted to give a few illustrations of what could be if we had a public arts program. In particular, looking at problems that we have in the community that we do not have answers to as a council. Problem, we have more bullying and violence in schools than ever before. Art solution, an artist-in-residence program in the schools, where a chosen artist works with youth, making art around issues of bullying and violence, working to break cycles of revenge and promote a culture of mediation and reconciliation. Another problem that we have that we don't know how to solve is we're losing our local historic assets at an alarming rate. Even historic supporters are wary, have been wary of participating in our landmarking programs. An art solution would be that artistic renderings of historic designations that help people visualize the history of Urbana. We have a problem of a number of homeless children in Champaign County that has increased over the years. An art solution might be similar to the Suzanne Lacey piece in The Art That Meets Needs. In it, Suzanne Lacey works with, with female inmates who are victims of domestic violence. And so, an artist could work with children and wrecked cars to make sculptures which explore the wreckage of their lives and help them construct narratives to overcome their circumstances. We have one in three teen suicides is due to struggles with sexual orientation issues. An art solution would be a radio program for queer and questioning youth to discuss the pressures that they face in schools. By podcasting the show, they can connect with youth all over the world who are struggling with the same issues. So, I wanted to illustrate how arts addresses difficult social problems from an angle that other programs do not and cannot do that. And why, it, it, it's better than buying another cop. It's better than buying another person who is, who's updating the website. There's many ways in which, if we look at our budget and we see, how can we leverage what we have already, and art be a lever in that, that we could actually build on the programs that we have. Then I wanted to answer the question, why can't we leave the arts up to 40 North? Isn't that why they're here? And I did want to say that 40 North is an excellent and essential information promotions and advocacy organization. They are not a local arts funder. I worked with 40 North for two to three years in 2002 to 2004, to try to see if they were interested in funding the arts on a county level, and they chose not to. And I can show you the minutes of the meeting. So, if we lead the way locally and establish an Urbana program, we can always expand the Public Arts Trust Fund to include other governmental entities who wish to participate. Such intergovernmental cooperation is both desirable, and it will take time. And it's one of our goals. So, and then there's the issue of the $4 versus the $3, and I guess, I would like the opportunity, first of all, we're not necessarily setting up the budget right this moment, but I would like the opportunity and more time to work with the mayor to try to bridge the difference between the task force's recommendation and the staff's recommendation during this budget season. And if I can't do this in a way that's amenable to the majority of council members, then we will fund the program at $3 a year. So, it's not, it's a no-lose kind of situation. It's just that we haven't, I have not had an opportunity to meet with the mayor. We tried twice. I was in the hospital. I couldn't meet with her. Robin met with her, but we weren't able to actually connect over the budget. So, I would love to bring to you a picture of how we can fund this in 2008 and 2009, but I haven't had the opportunity to work on that sufficiently. I will say, however, Olympia, Washington, which has 44,000 residents, funds the art at $5.97 per head. Goodyear, Arizona, which has a population of 47,000, funds the arts at a per capita allocation of $5.32 per person. And Chicago, which is a favorite destination for us here locally, funds the arts at a per capita allocation of $6.93 per person. So, it would be useful for us to look at what they have prioritized, in addition to looking at our own budget, and see how we could do something similar. And I really appreciate your support on this. This has been a long time in the making.
Okay, I have questions from the mayor, and after that will be Dennis. Mayor?
Oh, discussion, anything, anything is open. Yep, comments, input. I appreciate what the task force did, and I certainly don't think this is a discussion about whether the arts are valuable or not. I think we all agree that they are. But, you know, when you're talking about how do you actually fund it, it is worth pointing out that you did do research on what other communities in Illinois provide. Arlington, Illinois, $0.80 per capita. Normal Illinois, $0.55 per capita. Arlington Heights, $0.59. Now, Normal Illinois, they've got the petition plan, which by now won't be made copycats as. So, I'm just saying that we have to look at this in the context of what is reasonable and affordable for Urbana. And I think that there has to be a creative work on how to fund this, and I don't think that that was done by the task force. If we're adopting this Exhibit C, that includes these two budgets, and I don't think that that's a good idea. I was kind of startled by the, the move from $3 to $4 per capita. The rationale was that if we did it at $3 and we paid a full-time person, the administrative cost would be too high a percentage. So, the solution, which I must say was quite witty, was to increase the total budget. I, you know, I've got a lot of budgets over the last 30 or so years, and I've never seen that solution before. It's usually reduce the administrative cost. But I don't really think that that's the issue. I don't think we should be talking about $3, $4, or $4. I think what I like in here is your item number six on page five, which says, "A structure to facilitate future fundraising opportunities for the public arts fund should be created." I think that's a great idea. I think we should delete the per capita, and I think what we should be talking about is what are some of the low-cost methods that we could use. And I wouldn't dismiss what happened in Meadowbrook Park. I think it's fine to have public input, but I think what was accomplished in 40 North for a very small amount of money is something that should inspire us, rather than, you know, necessarily.
Differently. Do you mean I've been talking all this time in the microphone? I can't repeat it. So, anyway, I'm concerned about the $4 and the $3. I think this has. I think this has to be, you know, done through the normal budgeting process because Lynn is absolutely correct. We have to know, do we have to give up something else? And maybe there's something that we're wasting money on that we'd be happy to give up, but I rather doubt it. And my other last point on this is on page six, when you talk about the Public Arts Fund, and this is also in the ordinance, you talk about the creation of a fund, which I think is fine. But then you talk about an account through which funds from the public percent. I think what you're talking about is getting money from the general fund. And when you talk about the public percent, that's only if we build a building and you're going to get the 1%. So I don't think that that should be in your definition of the fund, because it's unlikely that we're going to be spending a lot of money. So I think this is fine, but I think the financial part is pretty weak. And that if you're going to adopt the program, you should modify it and stop at page seven and not include the budgets.
Okay. I saw a hand up from Dennis and then Lynn.
There, I guess I have a couple thoughts to say. I totally support the concept of public art. I have since, before I came on council, I alluded to communities where 1% for the art was established fact, and the results were incredibly beautiful and apparent. To adopt Exhibit C as part of an ordinance, as sort of a part of the bylaw or the ordinance law of Urbana, when really I see it more as a document for discussion but not a final document, really bothers me a little bit. I feel like there's a lot of things in it that I kind of question or want to have more discussion about. And Danielle, since you said that yourself you didn't really have an opportunity to take more time to work with the mayor, I'm wondering, and I guess I'd like to make the motion, to continue this discussion and defer it to further action to our next committee of the whole meeting in two weeks. And during that time, maybe we can have some input to, I don't know, either solidify some of these questions that the mayor's just brought up, or to iron out what we're going to do with the funding question of three or four, you know, per capita. I think, I think without making some significant cleanup aspects to it, we're really not ready to adopt it. That's how I feel. So I would make a motion that we defer this for further discussion to the next committee of the whole.
There's a motion on the table, so that would be an amendment if you want to make it. It would be like an amendment to change the original motion to instead send it to two weeks from now.
Don't you just take motions as they're made, small to large?
Small to large.
Defer is, uh, override.
Ah, defer is different, yeah. If you want to defer. I'm suggesting to defer it.
That's, that's actually only at city council, not a committee.
A postpone, do a postponement.
Postpone it?
I would move to postpone our discussion until April 6th, next committee meeting in the whole.
I would second that. It would be the 27th, I think, or something.
The 31st, we don't have a meeting.
The 24th is a Monday, two weeks from today.
24th.
That would be a committee meeting.
I mean, I think we have a clear, I think we'd benefit from having a little more time to have this solidify.
The 24th is a committee meeting.
The 24th is a committee meeting.
All right.
10 times plus 14 is 24.
14 plus 10? Okay, so there's a motion from, I guess, made by Lynn and seconded by Dennis, to postpone this to two weeks from now and continue the discussion there rather than sending it to committee.
It's a very important, it's a very important and significant and very positive program, and it would be nice to have it very clear. And, you know, we just recently got a, I mean, we all saw this correction just as, just as we sat down. So I think, I think a little bit of pulling it together and clarity would be.
Okay, so we'll continue to do discussion at this point about the motion.
Because I also wouldn't mind having it come back to council meeting, if that would be preferable and could be, we could manage it, you know, by then, but.
In other words?
I mean, I'm open to that.
If it were cleaned up by next week, essentially, is what you're saying.
Right, I, I, right. But if that's too soon, okay.
We're not in a hurry, hurry.
Give us a little, give us a little committee.
Yeah, we're not in a hurry, hurry.
Okay, would your, would your motion also include, is it a package deal? It's both the proposal and the ordinance?
Ordinance.
So you want to send both pieces, you want to keep both pieces in committee essentially?
Yeah.
And bring them back for discussion in two weeks?
Yes, okay.
Okay, I have a, I'd like to make one comment extending what the mayor said.
Go ahead.
You know, I was looking at, you know, all these different communities, comparing ourselves to Illinois, and the one that sticks out, of course, is Chicago. And if you look at where Chicago gets its money, it's on the hotel motel tax. You know, they're getting it from tourism. I'm curious to where, where some of the, where does Columbia, Missouri, where does, where does Iowa City, those were two of the other community, where did these other, where did these other communities get their money from? You know, I can think of Olympia-Washington, that's a tourist destination. Yes, okay, yeah. So state capital is a tourist destination. Is Goodyear a tourist destination? Dennis says you lived in, are you referring to Santa Fe?
No, it's Albuquerque, but I mean, it's too big to compare.
Yeah, okay, it's too big. But again, you know, one of the, one of the things might be, you know, hotel motel tax. Are we, are we tapped out on hotel motel tax? Is that an appropriate place to look for funding for something like this? You know, in terms of discussing, where do we get the funds for expanding? Because we, clearly, we're supporting things within our budget now, as, as the mayor's pointed out. But, but if you do want to add new stuff, where do we get it from? And we've got other, other priorities too. How does this fit in with all the other priorities? But this is one of our goals.
It is.
It is one of our goals. We do want to get it done, and so, so we need to figure it out. And if it takes two weeks to get it figured out, I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, the task force did talk about hotel motel tax, and we consulted with Ron Eldridge and some of the task force members, even promoted increasing the hotel motel tax, which we know are local operators that stated in the past they would oppose. And in Urbana, we don't set aside our hotel motel tax. It's part of our general fund. So the controller in consulting with other staff, we came back to the task force and asked that this be not an earmarked fund, if you would, because we didn't, we don't really have that ability. And I think that's where we came up with the per capita benchmark. They were looking for dedicated revenue streams. And we, as a staff, came back and said, well, let's look at goals rather than isolating dollars that would always be there for the arts. It's something that our controller advised against. So just to let you know, there was that discussion. And looking at how this could be absorbed by the budget, one of the thoughts was, to the extent that these projects occur in TIF districts, that would be a possibility. But, you know, it's, it is a, it is a tight budget. Until we get through that process, we don't know what might be, might be the trade-offs.
Okay, I think the mayor had a comment just to answer that budget question as well. And then I know I saw Danielle's hand, Robert's hand, and Dennis's hand. So we'll, we'll take the mayor's comment first.
Yeah, I think that we can set up a fund if we want to isolate the money and we want to have it accumulate. That's very simple to do. I've set up a lot of funds in my life. And to answer Charlie, on the hotel motel tax for Chicago, you know, Cook County's going to have a big sales tax increase, so there's real discussion about whether people are going to keep going to Chicago, because it's going to be very expensive for them to buy things there. So you always have to watch out that you're not setting your taxes so high that you discourage people from coming to your, to your community.
Okay, so next we have Danielle. Anna, if you had a clarifying question first, yeah, go ahead and answer.
Charlie, you had asked where Olympia and Goodyear get their funding. And based on my research, Olympia-Washington receives 1% of major construction projects. They have a 1% for art program on construction projects, which is not the same as a building project. So they, I believe, use out of their CIP. And they additionally have a 1%, excuse me, a $1 per capita ordinance, which says that every year they will budget $1 per capita. And the city of Goodyear, Arizona, has established a 1% from the capital improvement projects fund.
Okay, thanks. So Danielle, and then we'll do Robert, and then we'll do Dennis. Danielle?
I think that if we could show our support for the creation of a commission, that would be sufficient for us to begin to move forward on establishing the Public Arts Commission that will be doing work to bring back a proposal to the council. So that's the part I was hoping we would be able to get to today. And in terms of us looking at what we're already spending and on the, on the arts, and then coming back with where we would find the budget for a $4 per capita allocation is something that we could take separately. But I guess I, I mean, I just sat here and listened to Bike Paths taking $5.4 million and the staff advocating for how some of that's there, but we have to still come up with millions of dollars. And I sat here and I watched Fila Road, the discussion happen, and it was multimillion-dollar project. And we said we were going to move forward with the consultants. And I sat here and I watched an economic development agreement that was a $2 million incentive to a developer of five points. And so I'm really baffled, actually, why, after working on this for 10 months, the Public Arts Task Force would be questioned to this degree. And so maybe if someone can answer that to me, it will be easier when we meet as a task force tomorrow to be able to try to explain what happened to council this evening. I can explain to them what it is exactly that the council is looking for. And I have two questions on the table. What is it that we spend now? And where in the current budget can we find the allocation that the task force is recommending? I think those are small questions. I also think that we didn't ask those questions with the projects that we just moved forward.
Okay, Robert?
Yes, I'm an advocate of the arts. Being an artist myself, I think it's a great thing to have going on. But I'm also a prudent person when it comes to spending money. And I think that we need to know specifically where we are now with the monies we've allocated for the year for arts projects, and what it, what does it really mean per capita for the city of Urbana? Then we can do a comparative analysis. I don't like the idea of using creative accounting to try and address this. And I think that we need to have those facts before us, before we can really understand the complexity of what we're really saying when we say per capita.
Okay, Dennis, and then Lynn.
I think, I think that the process and the result will benefit through more, more thought by the council and more deliberation and a little more focus. And it'll be a greater pleasure to support it if the parts of the proposed program itself are a little more clearly delineified. And since the whole page of the proposed program has to do with trying to make a decision between the benchmark for per capita spending, and the mayor just thought that it might be wise not to even mention that in particular and work on the, work on those details separately, it just seems logical to take a little more time with it. And also, I think that if the public, if the city's going to spend money for art, I support the ephemeral arts. I support music, I support festivals. But if it's going to be associated with the building, I think a permanent result that's affixed or integrally related into the building structure is a better bang for the buck for the public. I think that it doesn't disallow the use of the public arts funding to create music festivals and programs for children that are personally enriching but has no significantly obvious result mechanically or physically, really, you know, if it's going to be funded by the construction industry or municipal building funds. And also, I support the arts, and I think the arts are an indelible part of our lives. I also am an artist. I supported myself as a fine artist for 10 years before being coming involved in graphic arts media and working for commercial publishing. So I know what it's like to, you know, go to an art show with your work and either have it accepted or not, and what that means to you about getting the gas to go home, or whatever it is. But I don't think that the place of public arts is to, is to conduct art therapy. I think that's a separate calling for the use of the arts. And I think that we should be, we're inclusive, but I don't think we should be necessarily the servants of every aspect of possible use of art. I think, I think there's some public, since it's public art, I think there should be some distinctions so that it has a universal application and not therapeutic, like, not, not an individual therapeutic role, perhaps. I mean, I think that's a thing we can discuss. I really like, what I really like about this proposal is the concept of having what you might call pocket grants that go from $1 up to $499. I think that there's a lot of very interesting funding for the arts that could result in evenings of music on the street, creative children's, you know, you know, finger painting moments, you know, during, you know, events or in the park or in the, I mean, there's a lot of creativity here in this ordinance, and I really support so much of it. I don't think it's going to hurt us to take two more weeks to, to get it right.
Okay, thanks. Lynn, who was the next hand up?
I was just going to say, Danielle, in just a response to your question and what to share with the group, my concern is because we're setting up an ordinance that's going to be ongoing for a number of years. I mean, if this was a one-time expenditure, I mean, I think I would be less concerned. But because we're setting up a, something that we're going to be, you know, moving forward with for a number of years, of course, unless it, you know, without council action, I just think it's probably worth another couple of weeks to sort it out, what, what the impact has this year and how it might work out in future years, so.
Okay. While there's time, I'm going to add my brief comments. I, I'm really excited by the plan. There's so much work into it. I personally feel like I'm okay sending this to council and approving it. The ordinance and the program, neither of them, as it said in the staff memo, neither of them ordain a certain amount of funds to go into Fund X. Neither of, none of this spends any money. It, the, the issue of exactly how much we spend, I think, won't be solved until we do the budget, until June. And I'm a little worried about us not being able to have the commission start their work and move from being a task force to being a commission until June. That's when we'll really adopt ordinances, adopting the annual budget ordinance, that move money into a fund or do things with money. So to me, I feel like getting hung up on that doesn't really help, and it doesn't really matter so much. The, the program and the ordinance that create the commission are things that I'd be ready to move forward with. So we'll see what the consensus of the group is. We'll see if we bring this back in two weeks. But I think at that point, we still won't know exactly if it's $3.25 or $4.03, because the budget time is when we make that decision. So, so that's my feeling about it. I'm really strongly supported, supportive and excited. Are there any other questions, any other discussions? Anna, you had?
I'm concerned that there's some misunderstanding about the ordinance.
Okay.
And so I think it's important to note that there are basically two things, three things that are set up with the ordinance. It's the establishment of a commission, and the roles are described. And there is a dedication of, a dedication of funds for a percent-for-art program on municipal building projects, and it sets the threshold. And the third thing is the Public Arts Fund, and it describes administration. So I just wanted to point out those differences in the ordinance, because the program, where is it? Is more general language that, in my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, it wouldn't be, this, this program proposal wouldn't be, it wouldn't become law. This is a document that can be distributed to the public and can be used as the initial start of a policy regarding the program and the program components.
Okay, Charlie, you had?
I'd like to suggest something. Let's split this up into two pieces. I think a lot of people have concerns about exactly how to, how to do the, basically, Exhibit C, which is the, the proposal for the Public Arts Program. And what level of detail and what exactly is it? of detail and what exactly is attached to it. The other thing is the ordinance, which I think with a couple of minor changes, could probably meet muster tonight. Okay? Because I think the ordinance just simply establishes the three pieces that were just described. Okay? So, yeah, the ordinance.
Has money in it.
No, it doesn't have, well.
It does.
It really does.
Four dollars.
Well, no, it says where, that's a whereas. What I was going to suggest is that we strike that whereas, that we strike the fourth whereas in this, okay? And that, plus, we change the mission statement as described earlier. And I think that leaves this able to set up the commission and get the ball rolling to next week for, for getting the commission started. I don't, I don't know that there's, I'm not sure that I heard any other objections to this. We're all very tired. It's three and a half hours now, and we're also suffering from springing ahead here. So that, that was going to be my suggestion. We strike the, the fourth whereas and send this to council.
Okay. And just to clarify, before we go any further, and then we have two more people with hands up, there's an initial original motion on the floor, which is the Shinaweth-Smythe motion to send the program to city council with a couple additions and changes.
Right.
There's a substitute motion then by Lynn and by Dennis to, to instead substitute that we send the program and ordinance to committee in two weeks, and keep it in committee for two weeks. So that's a substitute motion that we would vote on first, and then we would go back and, you know, vote on the original if the substitute failed or didn't, didn't fail and succeeded. So that's what's on the floor right now, and if you want to suggest a different.
I just wanted to hear what the mayor had to say.
If people want to suggest a different route, then we could end up, the people who made the motions could withdraw them all, and we can start back at ground zero if we have a consensus about what to do. Mayor?
I did point out that on page five, I felt that the public percent is a pretty awkward phrasing there. But I really think that we need some time to talk about this for two weeks, so I don't see any advantage to, you know, trying to appoint a commission. I mean, that takes a lot of time to appoint a commission. So I would appreciate having two weeks to talk to Danielle and get this worked out.
Okay. Can I, I'm going to do a quick straw poll. I want to see a show of hands just asking about whether the majority of people here would generally like to see this go directly to council or wait two weeks and for all of it to come to commission. So raise your hand first if you would like to send pieces of this to council in, in two weeks.
In one week.
I'm sorry, council in one week.
One week.
Okay. So there's three people who'd like to do that. Raise your hand if you'd like to put both items off generally for two weeks and feel like we should discuss again in committee in two weeks. Okay. Three hands and a mayor hand for that. So I think then what we'll do is we will take a vote on the substitute motion to put this off for two weeks, and if it succeeds, then that becomes the main motion, and we'll vote on it and see it in two weeks. I'm sorry, yeah, the mayor doesn't vote. The mayor's just here as staff tonight, in your official capacity as staff to the committee. So we like opinions, yeah.
But then it fails.
So, so we're going to.
Either can go in forward.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to take a vote on the, the substitute motion that would send both of these items to the committee meeting in two weeks. That would be Monday, March 24th. Would all those in favor say aye?
Say it again?
I'm sorry, yeah. We want to be clear, this is the voting on your motion, the Lynn and Dennis motion, to send both items, the program and the ordinance, to the committee in two weeks, Monday, March 24. Okay. And that would, that would substitute for the original motion. Would all those in favor of going to committee in two weeks say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries. So that becomes the main motion then. So the main motion is now on the floor, the Shinaweth and Smythe motion, which has been basically substituted with this one, to send this, all, both items, to the committee meeting in two weeks. Any, does anybody want to do any discussion before we're done with this topic tonight? Danielle?
Could I just say out of respect for the time of the task force members, that if members of the committee of the whole have particular input to, to any of this program, that you show up tomorrow at 7 o'clock at the task force meeting, which will be upstairs in the conference room, and you provide any additional input in addition to what I have written down this evening. There's two questions on the table that we will discuss tomorrow. But I think what's so difficult for me is that I feel like I've carried this for a long time. I've given regular updates to the council, and for some reason, it didn't get on your radar completely until now. So, so the delay is difficult because I have to keep carrying it, and I can't focus on other things during that time. So I'd, I'd really like to have full resolution. I'd like to hear from committee members. If you have specific concerns, I'd like to work to resolve those concerns with you in conjunction with the task force and staff. And so please speak up and, you know, be clear, and let's see if we can get something concrete in two weeks.
I would ask towards that end, if, is it possible in two weeks that mayor, you and Danielle, and maybe Libby and Ron, whoever was part of the discussions, talking about the $3, $4, can get a chance to sit down so that in two weeks, when we come back, there's some sort of group consensus, or, you know, maybe we go our different ways, but some sort of resolution or conversation at least about those differences so that when it comes here, we have a clear picture of, of, you know, of who supports what and sort of what our options are? Is, is that thing reasonable that in, within two weeks, that could at least be that kind of conversation?
That's why I requested two weeks.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Dennis, and then Lynn, we'll go in order.
Okay. All right. Now, I appreciate the invitation to come tomorrow night to talk the task force. I have a commitment tomorrow night, so I may not be able to do it in any way. That's why I'm asking for two weeks, not one day, to respond. Also, I think that the task force is doing an excellent job, and I don't think you should take it personally that, that it might take just a pinch longer to refine it. I think it's not a, we're not saying that this is bad work, or we're not, we're not condemning it, or in any way we're supporting it. But when we adopt rules and procedures to establish commission, it's just really nice to know exactly what we're doing and what the, you know, that we can count on, what we have thought about is best practice, that's all.
Lynn?
I guess I'd just like to say, I think there were some substantive changes that were recently brought forward in terms of the amount and a couple other things. And so I think really frankly, this is all good news. We're going to have a, we all are in general agreement that we're going to have a public arts commission. This is all good. We just want a couple more weeks to figure out the details and make sure that we've got our ducks in a row in terms of, with the money. So I think it's, it's a big deal. I mean, it's not something that a lot of cities do. I mean, there are definitely a lot of cities that, that do it, but I think it's kind of unique for us, and so I think it's worth the time to work it out so we move forward positively.
Any other questions or discussion? So as I understand it, we should do a final vote. I think we substituted this two-week thing into the original motion. Phyllis is shaking her head. Phyllis is saying yes. Oh, we're done? Okay, we voted, we're done. Thank you all. We're really done. We've done it and overdone it. Our last item tonight, our last item is ordinance 2008-0314. This is an ordinance vacating a portion of Park Street between Lincoln Avenue and Bucie Avenue. And Gail Jamison has patiently waited three and three-quarters hours to talk to us about the street vacation. We have 15 minutes left in the meeting, Gail.
And you guys, since this is about Carl, I'll be recusing myself to step out.
Thank you. Gail?
The issue we, you have before you this evening is that we've been notified to Carl that they purchased the last piece of property at the, on Park Avenue or Park Street adjacent to Lincoln Avenue. With that acquisition, they now own everything on both sides of the street for the remainder of the distance between what we vacated previously, which was from the east leg of the north, or east right away of the north leg of Bucie extended to the east. This vacation that we're bringing to you tonight, or the ordinance for vacation, is for that portion of Park Street to the west, to Lincoln Avenue. The, last year, we had to appraise, and Carl's agreed to the prices for acquisition. It's listed there in a memo at $234,500. And this vacation is, like the others in the Carl area, continued upon them getting their certificate of need from Illinois, from the state. And we expect that, they're anticipating sometime late summer, early fall, having that decision from the state. And there's a copy of the agreement attached to this memo, if you're, towards that effect. And then Public Works is recommending that you approve or pass this ordinance vacating the portion of Park Street between Lincoln Avenue and Bucie Avenue on the council.
Any questions for Gail? A motion? Charlie, go ahead.
I'll move it in a second. Gail, I was hoping somebody from Carl would be here to answer a question. When we talk about all the bicycle paths and stuff, we had spoken informally to them about a request to run the bike, the bike path from going south on McCullough. You know, currently, it, it curves around the, the parking deck and heads to Kohler, which is fine. But we'd also talked about having a bike path that would continue straight and cross the railroad tracks and, and connect up so that eventually it would connect up with McCullough on the other side, which would connect you up to Main Street. And we talked about them, I don't know who owns the property, I think they do, but they'd have to get some permission from the railroad to do that, to do a path there.
I, I don't believe they own that parking lot immediately south of the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay.
And they would have to get permission from the railroad. I haven't been a party to any discussion about that specific pathway. We have looked at the pathway of coming, that coming down Kohler and then going through on Park Street and through the campus area, and coming out onto University Avenue, just to the east of, through their facilities, just to the east of, of Bucie, and then along University Avenue.
Yeah, that, that was, that was a separate one, but we'd also thrown that out. And I, I, before it gets lost in the radar, if you can just sort of remind them, if we could look at that at, at some point, I don't know whether that, you know, because we, we probably have sidewalk there, and I don't know if it's a matter of, of working with our sidewalk on McCullough and, you know, right away across the, I just think that it would be a wonderful connection for Main Street to, to Park, or to McCullough, to, to Park, to Kohler, which eventually will get you a route to Bradley from, from one side of town all the way to, to Duncan, basically, is the goal.
I, I know that that's on Public Works' radar screen, because we want to get that accomplished, that connection from Carl to downtown, and that's one of the routes we're looking at.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. That was just, that was, so I'll make a motion to send this to council, the recommendation for approval.
Second, okay. There's a motion and a second. We have other comments? Mayor?
Yeah, the, the agreement that they signed said that they would provide public pedestrian and bicycle facilities according to a circulation plan to be provided to the city engineer for his or her review and approval. So we have the final say on whatever plan they have.
Right, and they do. And they have provided some information on the route to the west, but nothing on specifically that I have seen on the one immediately east of the parking lot.
Right, it shows in their, in their general plan, but not exactly yet, yeah.
And we'll, we'll keep working with them on that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Would all those in favor of sending us to council signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. We'll see that next week. Thank you, Gail.
I have last.
Yeah, Charlie had a quick announcement that we had added to the agenda item. Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, before you, and I wrote it out so I wouldn't forget what I wanted to say. Since we're talking about quality of life issues, I've got one that unlike art and bikes, won't cost us any money to implement. I've handed out a summary of the work of matslaw.org that they've done locally, and I'll be bringing to committee a proposal, a proposed cellphone driving ban ordinance in two weeks. I'd ask that you review this document before then, and I'd ask that you take a look at least at the blue tab right now, in two weeks. Yes, in two weeks. The, the contents here are, include petitions, some corporate policy and liability issues, the legislative status of various bills, which changes by the day, some research summaries, there are editorials that have appeared, both for and against, some of them local, a list of common objections to cellphone driving bans, and a, and a sample Urbana ordinance. And then on the flip side of that is an incomplete list of endorsements in favor of the cellphone ban, which includes the, the State PTA, the West Urbana Neighborhood Association, the University of Illinois has banned the use of cellphones in their vehicles. The chancellor has agreed to support cellphone driving ordinances in the cities of Champaign and Urbana. His letter's included in here. And Champaign County Bikes and Prairie Cycle Club also support the ban. There are, in, in working at the farmer's market, we got petitions from 577 Urbana residents, 465 residents of Champaign, and that shows you how many Champaign residents come and shop over here at the farmer's market. 32 from Savoyan, 173 from around the state, most of them from the county, but, but including some from out of state, which was interesting. So anyway, this is, this is all material that includes expert legal opinion from, from the law school and some nationally recognized research that's done here in Urbana. This material is paid for by private donations at no cost to the city and represents the views of, you know, about 600 local Urbana residents. And I'd also like to point out that, that, you know, this special interest group of 600-plus people have nothing to gain but their own personal safety and the safety of their family. Urbana can only gain by recognizing, by being recognized as a leader in bicycle pedestrian and traffic safety consciousness in the Midwest. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'd like to ask, Libby has some good news for us that should be announced.
Good news announcement?
Yes.
Okay. Go right ahead.
She should have put this in the staff report.
Dr. Tyler?
We heard this week that we did get the IDA funding for Crystalview Town Homes. The fourth time was the charm, and all that work that went into the application, all the letters of support from the mayor and work with the staff and Representative Jacobson, finally, the state granted the tax credit, so we can move ahead with Crystalview and Brinshaw and the housing authority. So thank you for your patience.
Congratulations. Okay.
What about mentioning your personal achievement?
Oh, you have to mention your, your personal achievement here. Tell us.
I would do it, but I'm not sure exactly how to state it. But we, but you've become a fellow in this, in the nation's.
Urban Planning Association.
Urban Planning Department or.
American Institute of Certified Planners?
There you go. This is a person who knows.
This is an achievement, and I think there were two of us in Illinois this year. It's FAICP is the designation, Fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners, but women can be members, and I am actually the first female in Illinois, which is a great achievement. But what I wanted to mention was, in the application, I had a lot of assistance on the application. I think what made it so strong was all the progressive planning that we do interban on all of the projects that I've been able to work on, whether it's Market at the Square, or public art, or bicycle planning, or, you know, affordable housing, green communities, et cetera. I think that really strengthened the applications. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work on those projects, and I'll be except getting the election in, I think it's the last day of April in Las Vegas. So I'll be going to Las Vegas to get indicted or inducted into that particular, yeah.
Darn it.
Yeah. Congratulations, Libby. Yeah. There being no further business, this meeting's adjourned. Good night.